And ready to record the meeting?
And councilmember, councilmember Benjamin and Mayor Pro Tim Wallach are online. All right, my mic was muted. Councilmember Benjamin and Mayor Pro Tim Wallach are online and present.
Good. Well, welcome everyone to the May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Boulder City Council. I'm going to go ahead and Gavla started, call the meeting to order. And so if we can begin with a roll call, please, Alicia.
Yes, sir, and good evening, everyone. Tonight's roll call will start with Councilmember Benjamin.
Present.
Mayor Brockett.
Present.
Councilmember Folkerts.
Present.
Friend.
Here.
Joseph.
Present.
Spear.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Wallach.
Present in spirit.
Councilmember Weiner.
Here.
And Yates.
Right here.
Mayor, we have our call.
Thanks so much, Alicia. And I'll just note that by our rules of procedures with Mayor Pro Tim Wallach being remote, if I need to leave the room for a minute, I will turn to Mayor Pro Tim Pro Tim, Rachel Friend, to take over the reins in that event. Amer- Amer, okay, fine. I like Pro Tim Pro Tim better. So I will now ask for a motion to amend the agenda to make two changes. To add item three C, which is a consideration of a motion authorizing the co-acting city attorney to appoint special counsel to investigate and, if necessary, prosecute all complaints related to a code of conduct complaint. And to remove item six A CCRS Nonprofit Support Program Grant Criteria Review, which has been rescheduled to the June eighth study session.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hands. Okay, that's unanimous, maybe, or close.
Do you want me to say something?
No, you don't have to say anything.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, then we will head to the first item of our Agenda one A, which is the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Dushan Bay Tea House Declaration presented here by Councilmember Yates. I got it. We got some guests joining us. Come on up here, folks. Right here. Yeah, we used to stand over in the corner and then the TV people told us we needed to stand in the middle. All right. Twenty-fifth anniversary, I'm going to introduce these folks in a second. Twenty-fifth anniversary of Boulder Dushan Bay Tea House, May fifteen, twenty twenty-three. Dushan Bay Tajikistan has been Boulder's sister city since nineteen eighty-seven. In Tajikistan, the Tea House is the center of community and culture. Often elaborately painted and decorated, the Tea House is where Tajik people gather to share stories, debate politics, celebrate birthdays, and mourn deaths. So in nineteen eighty-seven, as Boulder and Dushan Bay were cementing Boulder's second sister city relationship, the mayor of Dushan Bay visited our city and offered a gift to Boulder with Tajik Tea House. Boulder accepted the offer, and the Tea House was constructed in Tajikistan by master woodcarvers and other Tajik artisans. The Tea House was then deconstructed in Tajikistan, and its two thousand, three hundred and forty-three pieces were crated and shipped seven thousand miles to Boulder for assembly here. The delivery of the disassembled Tea House was followed by almost a decade of spirited community debate on whether to move forward with assembling the gift and where to actually erect it. Finally, in March nineteen ninety-seven, on a five to three vote, the city council approved the construction of the Tea House on Thirteenth Street, one block east of here. Dushan Bay's Tea House was opened on May fifteen, nineteen ninety-eight. Since then, the Tea House's operators, Sarah and Lenny Martinelli, have been serving meals and more than one hundred varieties of tea from all over the world. The Tea House has become a local favorite and a must-see destination for visitors. The interior features twelve cedar columns, each uniquely carved, supporting magnificently painted coffers, recessed ceiling panels depicting birds, butterflies, and flowers. Handcrafted ceramic tiles with bright geometric patterns fill every corner that is not painted. Seven bronze sculptures depicting the seven princesses from a twelfth-century Persian poem dance around a central fountain and pool. Visitors who look closely at the walls will find ancient poems written in Persian, as well as the signature of the Tea House's proud artisans and builders. Inside and out, the building is so special that in twenty twenty, it became the city's youngest designated landmark, preserving the exterior and, for the very first time in Boulder, the designating designation covered the interior as well. Because the Dushan Bay Tea House is such a special place in our community, we, the city council of the city of Boulder, recognize and celebrate the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Boulder Dushan Bay Tea House. We invite the community to attend the Museum of Boulder's exhibit displaying the artifacts of Tajik art and culture and telling the story of the building of Boulder's Dushan Bay Tea House. And we invite the community to join us in anniversary celebrations at the Tea House itself the weekend of May nineteenth to twenty-first, this coming weekend. I want to introduce our guests up here. Let me hand this to Rhett Erdl, who is the president of the Boulder Dushan Bay Sister Cities Committee. To Rhett's left is Sophia Stoller. Sophia had a few, a thing or two to do with the organization of our sister city arrangement going on forty years ago. Her husband Peter also had a hand in that as well. And then our esteemed guest, Maruf Mirak Matov. His grandfather was one of the artisans who created the Tea House more than thirty-five years ago and watch it language for ten years here in Boulder. And Maruf is visiting us from Tajikistan this week to celebrate the twenty-fifth anniversary. Maruf was here about five or six years ago to help us with some repairs to the Tea House that his grandfather helped build. And we hope to have Maruf back here this coming summer to do some more repairs to the Tea House. And with that, I want to turn over the mic to two people. Maruf is going to give us a greeting in Tajik, and then we'll hand it over to Sophia, who will tell us a little bit more.
Okay, thank you so much. Assalamualaikum. Bahamish mo'yo. Bishor fursandam ki bainjioh o'madam. Barii, barii Boulder Dushan Bay rahmati kalomay gyan. Let's say in English. Thank you so much for the Boulder. And it's really a pleasure for me. Thank you guys for having the Boulder Dushan Bay Tea House. It's great. Thank you so much.
Spasibo. And now I turn it over to Sophia Stoller, who's going to tell us a little bit more about the history, and then we'll yield to the next presenter.
Thank you. I just want to take a minute to talk a little bit about the journey of the Tea House. You know, it didn't just emerge from under a cabbage leaf.
Whoops. You read, I'll just hold it for you.
Okay, thank you. At any rate, the journey began over forty years ago during the heated part of the Cold War, when an ad hoc group of citizens, just ordinary Boulder citizens, came together because they were quite frightened by what was happening in the world. These people are rarely mentioned, and I really wanted to say their names because I think it's important to know that it wasn't just a few people, there was a core of people that came together. And it was under the support of Mayor Ruth Carell, who said, yeah, this is a good idea, later with Linda Jorgensen. And over time, the group used to meet up at IBS in a little attic room. And it included Mary Hay, the chairperson, who was the peace secretary for the Friends Meeting. The Friends was very important in supporting the group, along with Ann Trone and Ann White, who were members of the meeting, Mary Axe, who many people know at the university, Marcia Johnston, who worked at International Films at CU. CU Russian language professors Nicholas Lee, Earl Sampson, and graduate student Kathy Dewey, all worked for years, along with religion professor Doris Havist and philosophy professor Jim Frank. Attorney Philip Gordon helped us become incorporated as a nonprofit. Margaret Kadsel was a member. And Russian language speakers Bob Wells, Rhett Erdl here, and then Sam Sussman, who recently passed away, and John George. The group searched for five years relentlessly. Sister cities said, we're sorry, we can't help you. So we were on our own, trying to find a sister city on the other side of the Iron Curtain, and it was difficult. Finally, interestingly, through a wedding announcement in the Daily Camera, there was an announcement that CU physics professor Jim Scott had married his Russian translator. And I thought, oh, wow, that's interesting how that happened. And it turned out scientists were keeping contact with Soviet scientists meeting all the time, and there were meetings going on in each country with each other. So I called him up and I said, blah, 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 we're looking for a sister city. And he said, great idea, I know just the city. Dushan Bay. And we were like, wow, we never heard of it. Because we were looking for Russian cities, and it's a Tajik city. And he said, it's a great place and all the reasons that we know now, which it matched, there are scientists there, we're by the mountains. It was really wonderful. So we sent many delegations to Dushan. After the Soviet Embassy said, oh, okay, we sent delegations to Dushan Bay asking if they would become our sister city. And that included not only Mary Hay and Sam and Cheryl Sussman, but NOAA scientist Joe Allen, who was a solar flare specialist, and his wife Cheryl, Charlotte, rather, excuse me, and James Angalia Scott also went delivering letters. And finally, people said, oh, okay. And we were able to invite Mayor Maxudiy Kramov. About this time of year, the tulips were out, and he came here with a scientist, a high school movie star, and a bricklayer. And after many conversations, it was sort of fun. And sitting over pizza on the floor at Rhett Erdl's house, he said, we should have an exchange. And we'll give you a Tea House, a traditional Tea House. And he said, oh, that sounds wonderful. Nobody really knew what it was. And we'll give you a pizza restaurant. Okay. So he went home and with a great deal of political problems and finding money from the Soviet government, was able to get artisans together, a huge effort, and construct this unbelievable structure. The architect Lotto Shnidsa worked with Boulder architect Vern Syro, and it eventually came here and was unfortunately in storage for almost ten years. Very, very controversial, as city council members know. It was, people searched for funding to build it. It was really, really difficult to find enough money. Finally, Frank Day, who is a well-known restaurateur in Boulder, was convinced that he could, that he would take it on, and he would find bank funding to erect the building. Oh, this was good. And so they were in the process of negotiating all of this when it turned out the site that the city had identified was an EPA superfund site. And as soon as the banks heard that, they said, forget it. And that was sort of, now what do we do? And Vern and the future builder and Mary came to the city to talk with city manager Tim Honey. And Tim Honey said, I have an idea. And he knew about some funds in a water fund. And along with the support of city council president Leslie Durgan and Don Mock, came up with the idea of borrowing, I think it was eight hundred thousand dollars, to build the Tea House. And with a very close vote with city council, it was passed. And in fact, it was built, and four artisans came from Dushan Bay over Ramadan, when two of them were fasting the whole time. And it was put up and opened in May, twenty-five years ago, to a huge crowd of thousands of people. And it has been one of the most popular sites in Boulder since then. So it wasn't born under a cabbage leaf, but it really came from a lot of citizens who have, many who are now deceased, and large groups of people who supported the effort. So I just wanted to say their names and to thank everybody. For.
Picture. All right. Thanks so much for that. And thanks to that council twenty-five years ago for passing that by five to three and creating that community treasure. Okay, so moving on to item one B, which is the Older Americans Month Declaration presented by Councilmember Friend.
Thank you, Mayor Brockett. I'm going to sit and read this, and I will invite our guests to join me in just a minute after I'm done reading, if that's okay. They're being very generous and allowing me to read from a seated position because I'm still getting over COVID, and it's a little bit hard to stand for too long. But it is my pleasure and honor to read our declaration for Older Americans Month of May twenty twenty-three. Each May, the Administration for Community Living sets the theme for Older Americans Month, and this year's theme is Aging Unbound. This theme opens the opportunity for all community members to explore diversity in the aging experience and invites conversations about combating aging stereotypes and bias. In nineteen sixty-three, when President John F. Kennedy created Older Americans Month, only seventeen Americans had reached their sixty-fifth birthday. Today, there are currently fifty-five million older adults in the United States who are sixty-five years of age or older. Currently in Colorado, there are more adults age sixty than children under one year of age. In the next decade, adults over sixty-five will be the fastest-growing age group. Older Americans Month is a time to honor and acknowledge and value older adults as they contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to our community. It is time to emphasize the many positive aspects of aging, to push past traditional boundaries of aging stereotypes, and to embrace our community's diversity. We, the city council of the city of Boulder, Colorado, declare May twenty twenty-three as Older Americans Month and urge the community to take time this month to recognize the strengths of older adults in our community as essential and valuable members, as well as acknowledging the individuals who support them. With that, I'm going to invite Charlie Erdrich and Barbara Middleton, who are with our Age Well Advisory Committee, to come on up and meet me. And I will hand you this declaration and invite you to say a few words. You're welcome. Thanks for being here. Congratulations. Here's the declaration, and if you'd like to say a few words.
Oh, just thank you very much. And I see there's some people who are out there who are gray-haired. Thank you for being here.
Yes, likewise for me. Thanks a lot for being here and for the declaration.
Yes, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you for that. Thanks for joining us for that declaration. All right, now we're going to move on to open comment. And Ryan is going to go over our public participation guidelines before we get started. Ryan, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening all, and thank you for being here this evening to share your thoughts, your perspectives, and opinions. We're grateful for your participation. Want to make sure we talk through some of the guidelines for this evening and share that the city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and council, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. There's more information on the city's website about this vision. And then, as we turn to the next slide, sharing a few examples of rules of decorum found within the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that similarly support this vision. You will uphold these during this council meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, racial offense, and other speech and behavior that disrupt or otherwise impede the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. Participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by, and individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. In-person participants are asked to refrain from expressing support or disagreement verbally or with applause, with the exception of support for declarations, as we just saw. Thank you. Traditionally, during open comment and public hearing, support is shown silently through American Sign Language applause or jazz hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, we've got ten in-person speakers and two virtual ones. I'll read three names at a time. If you're in person, you can start moving towards the podium. If your name is getting... queued up, and you have two minutes to speak. Our first three speakers are Douglas Bent, Marcia Byer, and Evan Rabbits.
Good evening. My name is Douglas Bent. I'm the president of Horizon West Condominium Association located at 1850 Folsom Street. Tonight, however, I'm speaking my capacity as an individual resident. I'm opposed to locating the Homelessness Day Services Center at 1844 Folsom Street. Many factors make the proposed location unsuitable. As one example, it's only two blocks from Hazel's and two dispensaries providing easy access to alcohol and marijuana products. But I want to focus this evening on the fact that the site would incur costs of approximately $3 million in unnecessary costs. Element Properties and its partner paid $5.3 million in late 2021 for the 6,000-square-foot building on a .66-acre site. A vacant lot across the street at 1855 Folsom, almost exactly the same size, is listed for $2.7 million. Therefore, the implied value of the building is $2.6 million. The city proposes to renovate this building and use it for only 18 to 24 months before tearing it down. Current plans call for the Day Services Center to be temporarily relocated while constructing a bigger ground-floor shelter, Day Services Center, and 50 housing units above at the 1844 Folsom site. Southern location has not been identified yet, but would likely also need renovation. Why not choose a more suitable vacant location now to avoid these extra costs? A temporary location could be rented and used during the construction period. Choosing a different site that is vacant would avoid nearly $3 million for the acquisition, renovation, and demolition costs for the existing building. For these reasons, I urge the city to scrap the current plans for Homelessness Day Services Center at 1844 Folsom and seek another location. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. Now we have Marcia Byer, Evan Rabbits, and Robert Helterbrand.
Good evening, Mayor Brockett and City Council. My name is Marcia Byer. I have been a Boulder resident for 27 years. Chautauqua, I think, is a crown jewel of Boulder. Its goal remains as it was in the late 19th and 20th century, to promote the arts, education, and community. We're fortunate to have Chautauqua. However, the current CCA board is allowing the executive director to overreach in her actions and make reckless decisions that do not align with the mission. Recently, a decision was made to destroy the 100-year-old garden that has provided flowers, fruits, and vegetables to the staff, visitors, and cottagers. A 50-year resident of Chautauqua has maintained the community garden. The historic garden was destroyed at the direction of CCA staff without approval from the Building and Grounds Committee, the CCA Board, and without obtaining a Landmarks Alteration Certificate. This is one example of sheer disrespect and disregard for the longtime resident, but considering that Chautauqua has a national historic landmark designation and is of tremendous value to Boulder with over 1 million visitors a year, there are strict rules regarding this. Additionally, the ED made a decision to implement a centralized trash collection system without seeking community input and ignoring questions and concerns from the cottage owners and neighbors that now have a trash dump in their backyard. Again, the overreach affected all the cottagers, especially the multigenerational families who started our Chautauqua. Unfortunately, there is a pattern with this board, and the ED especially, not to involve the cottagers in the important decisions that ultimately affect them. The residents have an institutional knowledge that is invaluable to Chautauqua and should be called upon rather than ignored. Finally, I'm asking you, the council, to enforce the collaborative stewardship framework that the city and the CCA agreed to.
Marcia, your time is up. But if you could email us the rest of your comments, please. We'll get them.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Evan Rabbits, then Robert Helterbrand and Steve Pomerantz.
Waiting for the presentation. Four years ago, Dan Newman, president of the nonprofit Maplight, flew at their expense to Boulder to show us the free online petitioning system they offered and are still offering Boulder for free. He demonstrated it here at City Hall. But then, in the words of former council member Steve Pomerantz, "The city went dark." Seven months later, we learned that the city had rejected the free offer on false pretenses. Then-city IT Director Julia Richman falsely told two city council members and our city elections working group, including Matt Benjamin, that, quote, "Maplight had never made a secure website." But they had for the California Secretary of State, the League of Women Voters, and now Denver Elections. Julia left her job with the city a month later. Instead, the city spent half a million dollars on inferior software, which has hobbled petitioning ever since. I urge people to try to sign the two petitions now active at the city website on the screen, which is petitions.boldercolorado.gov. You can try the process without completing your endorsement. The Maplight software is superior because it allows you to receive your ID code by email or mail, as well as text or phone, and it's open source instead of proprietary software, so we can inspect and control and improve and share it. The city manager should accept the free software, test it against the existing software, and choose the best one. You owe it to the 71% of voters who voted for a usable system coming up on five years ago.
Thanks, Evan. Now Robert Helterbrand, Steve Pomerantz, and Patrick O'Rourke.
Thank you, council. My name is Robert Helterbrand. I'm a resident of the Whittier neighborhood, as well as a business owner in that neighborhood. I have a CPA firm located at 1823 Folsom Street, almost directly across from the 1844 Folsom, the site selected for the new Homeless Day Services Center. I have seen the considerations given to that site selection, and I see no consideration given to the neighborhood, the overall community, the residents, or the businesses of that area. The Whittier neighborhood is a thriving business community with very few empty commercial or retail buildings, unlike many areas of this city. It is composed mostly of local businesses that are, will be severely impacted by slight changes, such as an increase in the homeless population of the area. It is home to Boulder institutions like the Dairy Arts Center, McGuckin's Hardware, and the Village Coffee Shop. It is the economic crossroads of our town. It is .5 miles from Pearl Street Mall, 29th Street Mall, and the CU Football Stadium. It is .25 miles from the Dairy Arts Center, as well as four of our largest hotels that are frequently full of business travelers and tourists. And yet, no consideration was given to the economics of the neighborhood. Why was the impact on the neighborhood, the businesses, the residents, and the overall economy and potential tax revenue of this city not considered when a location was selected? Why has an economic impact study not been performed as to what impact this will have on our neighborhood and our businesses? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert. Now we have Steve Pomerantz, Patrick O'Rourke, and Fran Mendel-Sheet.
Can I have the first slide, please? Great, thank you. Steve Pomerantz, 335 17th Street. This, comments regarding the process for setting titles for ballot measures. My request is you add three points to the BRC or the charter. Point number one, the council shall seek the input of the Committee of Petitioners. Point number two, ballot titles shall be clear as regard to the effect of yes versus a no vote, and that any registered voter may protest the adequacy of a ballot title. Next slide, please. Removing the offending section of the BRC, as you are doing, will fix some of the title-setting problems, but not all. In particular, the municipal election code and the state code which we will be following does not allow petitions to have a title, only a summary. That would have solved the problem with the CU South petition. Additionally, the state law provides clear standards for ballot titles, especially with regard to what a yes or a no vote means. But the current charter does not have that requirement about a yes versus a no vote, so that needs to be added somewhere, probably in the BRC. Next slide about the charter. The charter only requires that the council get input from the petitioners about titles for initiatives, but not for referenda or recalls. If you had that in place, that would have helped solve the problem with CU South. That needs to be fixed. Next slide, this is the one regarding state law. Next one? Next? Next? Okay. State law leaves it to local governments to set rules for protesting poorly-written ballot titles. That's what you will be operating under, but unfortunately, it says, as provided by local charter ordinance or resolution, so it provides no direction on protests. So in summary, you're on a good path to start with, which was getting rid of the Carr Amendment, but now you need to add these other three points. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
And I have studied this stuff so much, I'll be happy to give you any information you need.
Thanks. Patrick O'Rourke, then Fran Sheet, and Michael Zhu.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Patrick O'Rourke. I'm the preservation chair for Historic Boulder. The people from the teahouse are here. It's an amazing story. Just imagine if it was voted the other way, what would have occurred there. I wanted to thank council member Folkers for attending the Boulder County Preservation Awards last week and staying the entire time. So we had over 100, I counted, numbers are important to me, I counted 150 people there. So preservation is important in our community. I specifically want to thank council member Bob Yates for your newsletter. It's the first time I've had to do it. While I agree with 90% of the things you state, I think it keeps me informed in what I enjoy in the community. I also want to thank the city council for the time commitments you've given to the services of Boulder and the Boulder community. Your time is well noted, and your continued support for preservation is well appreciated. While I don't agree with all your decisions, your deliberation is open, fair, and well discussed. For example, in June of 2022, Historic Boulder brought before this board a recommendation to expand the ban shell. At that time, staff did not agree that it was appropriate to move forward for three reasons. One, it was part of a hip. The hip is complete. It hasn't been finalized by Parks and Rec, but that's their problem, not ours. Number two is that you wanted collaboration between the Landmarks Board and the Parks and Recreation Board. It's been 10 months, and they've not met yet. They've met on the staff supposedly, but not between each other. 10 months is more than enough time. And number three is that James Hewitt, the senior historic director for Historic Boulder, recommended that this be part of a future historic district. And that's what Historic Boulder is about to apply for. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. Okay, Fran Sheet, Michael Zhu, and Don Bergel.
Hi. I want to thank you all for what you do do. Just showing up probably is half of it. The question I have is why bother with city boards if they're ignored? Why bother hiring knowledgeable staff if we keep paying costly consultants to tell us what we already know? June 14 last year, council rejected proposal by the Landmarks Board to extend the landmarking of the block 13 containing the ban shell in favor of a historic district in the civic area. Council's recent memo dated May 18 from the city manager and staff is a result of months of their working together without boards or citizens. Their proposal is to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on outside consultants when we could be doing the work creating a historic district, as staff was directed last year. The memo carefully proposes stalling the historic district process for the property at the heart of Boulder that is undoubtedly the most well-documented and studied block in the entire city. The information and history are at our fingertips and readily available. The civic area along the creek was designed by this country's first and most famous landscape architect. The history and importance of Boulder, to Boulder of this land is well documented. The fact is, without the designation, Historic Preservationists and the Landmarks Board don't have a seat at the table for the already funded Phase Two of the East End. If staff is determined to have a cultural landscape assessment, it should be for that entire creekway, as Olmsted suggested 100 years ago. If it should be done at the same time as the historic district is created, making them both relevant. Despite the barriers to develop the historic district, we hope to have an application submitted as soon as possible in the next day or so. So hopefully, it will be designated by this council. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Fran. Michael Zhu, Donald Bergel, and Dan Corson.
Hello, my name is Michael Zhu. Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'm here to advocate for a tennis center in our beautiful city of Boulder, Colorado. As many of you know, the closure of Rocky Mountain Tennis Center next year is a serious problem for the thousands of tennis players in Boulder. And the next year, we are losing the only indoor tennis facilities in Boulder and the largest group of courts in town. The great people at Parks and Rec are addressing some of the immediate issues around a few of the outdoor courts in town, but the long-term problem facing us is that tennis won't have a home in Boulder after next year. There will be nowhere to play for nearly half of the year, and all of the people looking for the courts, coaching, events, and community of a tennis center will have no options. This isn't just a tennis issue. This is an issue around the attractiveness of Boulder and its reputation as a great place to live. When all the other nearby communities, like Longmont, Lafayette, Louisville, Arvada, and Westminster, have better recreational options than us, can we still say that we belong on the list of best places to live? Parks and Rec has said that they are running a court study this year around potential new tennis facilities. I sincerely hope that the outcome of this study is that we find the land for a new tennis facility for Boulder residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Donald Bergel, and then Dan Corson.
Hi, my name is Don Bergel, a Boulder resident and also a tennis player. I'm here to raise awareness of a once-in-a-generation opportunity for the city to allocate space for a facility that will bring community-wide benefit. Decisions are being made in the coming year regarding the development of Valmont Park, the last suitable space to build a significant tennis and pickleball facility. My request is not about routine maintenance and neighborhood courts. The P and R department has that under control. This is bigger picture, one that the city council should be aware of. Boulder needs to allocate land for a public-private partnership to create an indoor-outdoor tennis center. Parks and Rec is well aware of the exploding demand for courts since the pandemic. Pickleball is a phenomenon that competes for the same resources. Then add the loss of the CU's South Courts in the annexation and the impending closure of the RMTC with the Millennium Hotel. Note that both of those are used by the public for lessons, for leagues, for tournaments. They're not just for CU athletes or private members. Arvada, Longmont, Parker, Centennial, and Denver, among others, have significant public tennis facilities attracting wide usage. Boulder has none. Valmont Park is the last suitable place in Boulder, and it needs to be a civic priority to allocate the land and then allow the tennis and pickle communities to organize and fundraise and build. If this opportunity slips by, there's no next location to consider in the future. I ask that the city take advantage of it and help create a project of lasting value. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Now we go to Dan Corson and then our remote testifiers.
Council members, I'm Dan Corson. As I celebrate my 50th anniversary in Boulder, I reflect on my great privilege in having chaired the Landmarks Board, chaired the Planning Board, and served in your seats for a while for a total of 18 and a half years. During my final 17 years of my career, I was employed with the State Historic Preservation Office. Now, as I entered dinosaur hood in the community, I am disappointed and saddened with the un-Boulder-like process for the proposed Civic Center Historic District that eliminates meaningful participation by boards and citizens. For example, the recent letter to you from the Friends of the Ban Shell sent over my email address was written because we could not obtain a status on the Civic Center Historic District project from staff. Why the secrecy? The email response, I soon, I soon to his credit, received from Park Staff states, and I quote in part, "Note that the development of a cultural landscape assessment that is part of the staff planning process and review of a historic district application will be related, but are separate efforts. Due to code-required timeframes for review of applications, these two processes will ..." review of applications, these two processes will overlap and proceed concurrently. However, the staff memo to you implies that historic district will not be considered until after completion of a cultural landscape assessment, and is unclear whether it is staff making the decision to proceed." Central Park is a small parcel and perhaps over recent decades, the most studied and assessed piece of land in the city. The two experts on the cultural significance of the site and its features are right here in Boulder, former Planning Director Peter Pollock and Architect Catherine Barth. Their research has transcended Colorado to DC and Massachusetts and elsewhere. And just last year, landscape architect Tina Bishop, Bishop issued a report addressed to planning staff on the cultural significance of the park and its various features, listing both contributing and non-contributing features. To propose an RFP with project completion in a few months just does not happen in the real world. In June twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, this council asked that the district rebought back to it in twenty-twenty-three. This will not occur under the planned, or what I believe may be the planned scenario. Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Dan. All right, we've got two virtual speakers, and they are Lynn Siegel and Stephen Bentley. So Lynn, you're up.
Yeah, Lynn Siegel. Um, you need to zone for a drugstore. Like Alpine Balsam is not going to have a drugstore. Farmica's gone from, from Pearl Street, now it's gone from Ideal. You need to do zoning for the services that we need, not building another condo. I was riding my bike out by the JCC. My God, Coburn's building a whole city there of condos, you know, more expensive condos. This is going to be renamed Condo City. This is ridiculous. It's, it's, you know, you blink and you're not going to recognize this place. Not okay. Balance, jobs, housing. Just say balance, jobs, housing. Put that in your mind when you go to sleep every night and do that, because that is the only thing that will save the city. Jobs, housing, balance. Otherwise, you're on the cycle of despair. More housing, more services needed, more low-income jobs to provide the services, more, more, um, housing needed for those low-income people. Can't live in Boulder. You know, homeless center on Balsam Street, that's problematic. You know, that we get these federal funds from the government for the homeless? So what? We should not accept them even, because you know what? It's a pittance compared to what's happening with Lytech funds that are supporting growth in all of the cities throughout the United States, blowing our economy as of June first, and the global economy for that matter. You know, this housing is a crisis, and it starts here in Boulder. We can change it, stop the subsidies, stop the subsidies, and increase the historic district right up to even Fine Park. Frederick Law Olmsted had it right. It's like everyone's, I, how come I agree with everyone that speaks at these meetings every time? And every time after the meeting, nobody says anything to them. There's no response. You have a lot of community anger here, and, and, you know, I have an angry voice. I'm sorry, it's not a happy voice, but do something the right way. Maybe you won't have so much.
Lynn, your turn is up, but thank you for your testimony. Right, our, our final testifier tonight is Stephen Bentley.
On the morning of twenty-fourth February, I was violently attacked and chased out of Emma Gomez Martinez Park by a man who was angry that I had reported another person to Boulder Police for allowing their dog to repeatedly antagonize my service dog in that same park. The attacker pursued me, threatening to beat me the entire time. BPD Officer Kate Pierce, ID number one-seven-four-two-four, eventually responded to that nine-one-one call, took my statement, and opened a criminal case number twenty-three dash zero-one-eight-one-five. On twenty-sixth February, I saw the assailant again in the park and called BPD's non-emergency dispatch to report that person's location. Later that afternoon, I received a phone call from one of those responding officers who said that the man admitted to chasing me out of the park and threatening to beat me, but the officer decided not to cite them because they seemed to be a responsible person and their dog was well behaved. On twenty-five April, I submitted a formal complaint regarding the actions of Officer Pierce and the other responding officer. As of this time, I have received no response from BPD regarding the formal complaint. I know that BPD officers refused to enforce the laws in Boulder. This refusal to take action can be completely arbitrary, as in my case, simply because the officers liked the appearance of the suspect, with absolutely no concern for the impact that protection for the perpetrator has upon the victim. Oversight of BPD's actions is critical because they can simply decide to ignore complaints or summarily disregard any concerns raised by those complaints. I have a lot more that I could say regarding this incident and BPD's refusal to enforce laws in my neighborhood and specifically within Emma Gomez Martinez Park. But my time this evening is limited. I thank you for your attention. Cheers.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, that brings open comment to a close. Thanks to all of our speakers tonight, and I'll turn to city staff to see if we have any responses.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things, and, and thank you all for sharing your voices as always. Um, I want to say, I, I know that city staff in relation to the Day Services Center, I know that city staff has been working, um, with folks, particularly those at Horizon West, and there is a meeting scheduled at the end of the month and hope to continue to have, uh, conversations, um, with community on that, uh, project. I want to also just thank for the passion of those that are interested in tennis in our community. Um, I know that I have heard from our Parks and Rec that, uh, they are involved in a court system plan, uh, to really think about what does that look like and what is, um, the future for, um, continuing to support tennis activities in the city, and council will be hearing about that in the future. Um, I wanted to, uh, speak to, uh, the questions about the historic preservation and the Banshell, and just want to appreciate, I know everyone's passionate about, um, such a wonderful asset in our community. Staff continues to move forward on the cultural, uh, assessment. I don't have the deadlines and the dates at my fingertips right now, but know that we will continue to advance that, and we will make sure, um, that we keep community and council apprised if that moves forward. Um, and I think for now, that is what I had at my fingertips.
Very good. Any questions or comments from council? I got three so far. Ginny, Nicole, Rachel?
Thank you, Mayor Brockett. I just have a question based on some of the comments that were made earlier, and I know, Naria, you, um, you've answered a few of them concerning the Day Center. And one of my question to you, and I'm wondering if maybe the speaker, can't speak for him, but if he was talking about a different, um, bill or proposition we've talked about on council before, because one of the comments were, that were made was that there are businesses that sell, uh, different substances, or shall I say marijuana? And my question to you is whether the Day Center, uh, will allow any type of substances, meaning that if someone is using the Day Center, will they be able to bring such substances on property?
Um, I know that the services that we're doing, and we continue to think about what that is, but there is no usage allowed, uh, in our facilities, uh, and that will be part of sort of the rules and protocols for the Day Services Center as we move forward.
Thank you for that. And I think my next question is about outreach. Also, I believe that was by Mr. Helderbrand. He mentioned Whittier, and he mentioned the lack of community outreach, and you just mentioned, you know, we're doing a lot of outreach. But my question to you, to the best of your knowledge, what type of outreach has been done to that community itself? Not just one particular organization, but to the community to ensure that there is buy-in and also that they are involved as part of this process?
I might have to put our Director of Housing and Human Services on the spot to answer more directly. I do know that staff has been responding, uh, to emails as we move forward and continuing to converse with community, but Kurt, that'd be helpful.
Uh, good evening, Councilor Kurt Fernhoffer, Housing and Human Services. Um, thank you for your question. Um, Councilmember Joseph. Um, so the, um, from a zoning standpoint, the use, um, that use on, on that type of site, what is required is a good neighbor meeting. Um, and that will be occurring, um, only once we are, um, further along and have more information to give, um, residents and neighbors. Um, and the, the purpose of a good neighbor meeting, um, under the code is, um, for, uh, neighbors to be able to give feedback on the operations, um, of such a center. Um, it's an administrative, um, approval, that use in that type of building. Um, so it doesn't require, um, uh, sort of outreach of an approval, uh, from neighbors. That's, uh, pretty unusual. Um, but we will, uh, so we're having, um, additional meetings. We're meeting with the, the direct neighbors to the north, and then we're also in conversations with the chamber about, um, having conversation with the business community.
Thank you for that. My last, I just have one quick question. When is our next update?
I'm sorry?
Our next update?
Uh, on, on homelessness, or?
Or for the day shelter, or?
Uh, we don't have anything, uh, scheduled at this point. Um, it would probably, um, however, align, um, with a, a similar update on General Homeless Services, which I think is September.
I believe that's when we have it scheduled for.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for that, and thank you for your response. Um, based on what I hear, I can understand now, well, I mean, we've been having those conversations for a very long time, and I know that's something that we strive as a city to ensure that community members are, um, receive notice. That's why we have those community outreach and engagement with community members. So, um, I appreciate your statement that, hey, here's the code requirement, but I can understand as well that community members, they are coming before council and expressing, um, some of this, their discomfort.
Sure.
So, but thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Ms. Sheen, Nicole?
I don't, stay there, Kurt. I think, I think you're probably the one to answer this, uh, maybe more than Naria, but I'll post to Naria, and then, uh, you can delegate. I'm just, you know, it strikes me that there, there have been a few times in our city's history where we have, um, opened up some sort of service facility that is primarily working with people who are experiencing homelessness. So we had the, the, um, overnight shelter in its original location downtown, right? We also had, um, the, uh, shelter when it moved to this North Broadway location, and then we also have Lee Hill Road. And I'm just wondering, you know, do, do we have some kind of accumulated information or data on what happened to those neighborhoods? Because I, I look at North Boulder, North Boulder seems to be thriving right now. Um, but, you know, was there kind of, were there any, you know, less desirable impacts of having those things there? And, and I don't know if that's something, you know, Naria, that's going, that's being included in, in these discussions, or, um, or, or something we can learn more about?
I'll defer, um, to Director Fernhoffer to respond to it, just because I haven't been in my two years. That hasn't opened, uh, in during my tenure, but I certainly will say that I have seen that in other communities as well and understand the concerns, um, and have seen that not play out, uh, the concerns, um, play out in the way people think, but it also has to do with the programming and the resources given to the particular location. Kurt would know more about Boulder.
Yeah, so that's, that's obviously a difficult question to answer. Um, some examples I can give, like in, you mentioned Lee Hill, um, we have seen a significant reduction in interaction with, uh, PD related to the individuals who are staying at Lee Hill from when they became unhoused to when they became housed. Um, there is very little, um, calls of service to Lee Hill, um, and probably not any more than any other sort of apartment complex. Um, however, we also know that there are impacts on the community when we, uh, introduce new services, and we want to be careful and thoughtful about how the operations of that could either have positive or negative impacts on the neighbors. But lastly, I'll say, these impacts that we have are, are community-wide, um, and throughout our entire community, and a lot of the programs that we're, we're working on, which are also initiatives of, of yours, um, are to have a, a wider community impact.
Is it it?
Oh, I just have one, one question. Um, and this, this one was about CU South. Somebody mentioned that the tennis courts were going to be gone. I thought that they were just being relocated, and I don't know if there's anybody here who could speak to that, but I was just trying to get my facts straight on that.
Yeah, we can double-check on that, but my, my, uh, thought was that that was the plan from CU, and so we'll get back to you on it.
Rachel, then Mark?
My recollection on CU South was that, uh, I think one tennis court was going to be required to be, uh, demolished to make room for, uh, the road or their construction, but the others were not going to be impacted, as I recall. Okay, my questions. Thanks to everyone who is here. This is a very interesting open come at night. Um, first on the Day Services Center, again, you know, I, um, I think we need to be pretty empathetic to people's fears, um, and I, I don't think right now we have a, a ton of trust from the community that we can adequately enforce, um, you know, incidents and, and issues. So I, I think we have some trust-building to do, and I can understand why people are, are worried. Um, my question, or maybe one thing that might be helpful to get, um, an update on, there you are, Director Fernhoffer, um, is, um, when we toured, uh, Safe Outdoor Space, the, the result there was an improvement in the, in the neighborhood, uh, impacts on crime and, and encampments was reduced. Um, when we, when, uh, Councilmember Yates and I toured, um, a day shelter in Denver, they had a pretty rigid rule, like you could not come in for services if you were camping within or, or, you know, caught doing anything within a certain number of blocks or something. So there were really tight efforts to make sure that there weren't going to be the neighborhood impacts that people worry about. So I think it might be helpful for us and for the community to hear, in addition to the good neighbor, um, agreement that, that's being worked on, like what is the research, kind of to Nicole's point as well, of how we're going to be, um, planful and, and can really assure the community and that they can have trust in us that we're gonna, um, carry that through? So that, that's maybe more of a, a request than probably something you can answer today? Did it make sense? Maybe that'll be my, did my request make sense?
Uh, yes, that did make sense, um, and thank you for that. Um, yeah, and I, I think our, um, uh, visits to those locations were, were similar, and, um, that's why the, um, the input of the neighbors will be important as we look at, at how it actually functions, um, and how it operates, and how it, um, deals with the surrounding, um, blocks around it as well. Um, but I, in essence, these, these, um, programs and services that we're starting are really meant to have a more positive impact on the entire community. And, um, uh, knowing that, um, where they occur, we have to pay special attention, and I, uh, certainly agree, we need to, we really need to listen to the neighbors and be empathetic to their concerns as well.
Thanks.
Do you mind if I fall open that real quickly?
Yep, I have a couple more though.
So, and just a, a extra angle to put on that, maybe just confirm that the good neighbor agree, uh, the good neighbor meeting and other, uh, meetings with neighbors and concerned folks will help to inform an eventual operations plan for the Day Services Center, um, so that we will be processing feedback in it and.
That's correct, yes. Thank you for that.
Thanks. Um, on the tennis commenters, uh, I, I'm a former tennis, high school tennis captain, and, uh, my, you know, come from a family of players, and I think our Fairview, um, girls team just went to state, as I recall. Like, we're, we, we do have a, a proud tennis history in this town, and it's, it's upsetting to hear that that, uh, is at risk. So I'm, like, are we looking at it for Valmont, which is what some of the speakers said? Um, and I also wanted to, um, note that I think there, you know, there's also the Area Three Planning Reserve, which will have some large park opportunities. So, you know, is that something that, that, uh, we as a council could say, we, we do want to make sure that, that tennis, which is such a, um, popular sport, thrives?
I'll say this, um, I know that for Parks and Rec, uh, tennis is also a, a sport that they want to see thrive. The purpose of the, I want to get it right, the court system plan, because if not, Ally will see this at another point and come down on me. Uh, but the purpose of the court system plan really is to do, to, to think about what does our community want, what does our community need? It is the truth, and I think this has happened nationally, that pickleball has kind of taken the place of some of the tennis courts, because they have to be played, frankly, leveraged on the same courts. And thinking about where that, um, is currently and what the needs are in the future, uh, there are sort of, there will be considerations about where that locates. Uh, I don't think, uh, staff is looking at Valmont this year, but certainly the entirety of our city structure will be looked at as we do that, and as we think about the court system plan, and I'm happy to tag Ally, um, after this meeting to make sure that we provide you all with an update.
Thanks. Um, next is on the, the questions we got on the, um, Banshell and Historic District. I was one of the people who voted to, to. I was one of the people who voted to, to move forward last year and so there has been delay already. Is this something that will come back possibly during my tenure? Will this get across the finish line?
Yeah, I believe that the cultural assessment is being planned for the end of the year. When that is, I don't know, but I'm happy again to follow up and, and let you know what the dates are.
That would be helpful, just so that we're not causing undue delay. And then just the last, I wanted to invite anybody who, who might know more than me on, we had a, someone speaking on the, on needed charter amendments. I don't know, Erin, if that's you, is that something we want to respond to and why we might not be doing that or if we're looking at it?
Sure. Thank you for the question. The legal challenge that was brought to the CU South ballot title, the city prevailed in. So it's not been brought forward by the city attorney's office due to a legal need. If however, it was the will of council to change the ordinance for policy reasons, we would be happy to draft changes to the ordinance.
Thanks. And the last one, Naria, just wanted to invite you. I thought I had a last one. This is my last, last one though. There was somebody who mentioned being a victim of a crime or assault or maybe threatened. Is that somebody that you could follow up with?
I didn't. I forgot when I meant, when I was going through my list. That is something that I'm certainly following up on and I have written the details.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Mark?
I have only one question and it is my last question. We are contemplating a Good Neighbor Meeting with respect to the day shelter. And it is going to, I assume it's going to be operated, operated by a third party. Kurt, do we contemplate entering into a Good Neighbor Agreement with respect to that facility and the neighbors? If not, why not? And if so, what will that look like?
So we have not contemplated a Good Neighbor Agreement. I mean, what's, we, I mean, we're basically following what's under the zoning code, which is a, a Good Neighbor Meeting. You know, if, if council wanted us to go in that direction, they would have to, to guide us on that.
I mean, the, the purpose of my question is not to suggest that it is required to have a Good Neighbor Agreement. But given the degree of concern that we're experiencing, would that not be beneficial, whether it is statutorily required or not?
Do you mind if I jump in here? This is basically exactly where I jumped in with Rachel, Mark, if you don't mind. Which is, which I believe that for this facility, we would have an operations plan, right? That we would have publicly available, that would be agreed to, that I believe would contain provisions in it that, you know, would probably overlaps with what would be contained in a Good Neighbor Agreement. Or be, I think you could accommodate anything potentially that you might have in a Good Neighbors Agreement in the operations plan. Kurt, does that sound?
Yeah, I mean, it, it will have an operations plan. I think the process of getting an operations plan approved by a group of neighbors is, is a, is a lengthy process. And it would, it would take quite a bit of time to, to implement something like that.
I, I acknowledge that. I'm simply trying to be responsive to what we're seeing in the community. And the fact that it is hard does not make it undesirable. And I think something that the community could look to and say, these are the standards we have been promised. And these are the standards we're going to hold the operator to, is, is not inappropriate in light of the, the difficult nature of what we're proposing to do. I'm not suggesting it's not difficult and I'm not suggesting it wouldn't be difficult to adhere to those standards. But if we're trying to make the community understand that this is an important facility with benefits for the entire community, I don't know that this is, is an inappropriate direction to go in.
Well, if council would like us to put that on the agenda, we, you know, CAC could discuss that. And it could be discussed at a future meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, lots of good questions. Are we ready to move on? All right, looks like it. Elisha, can we move to our consent agenda, please?
Yes, sir, of course. Our consent agenda tonight is item three, which consists of items three A through C.
Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Ginny?
Thank you. I just, thank you. I just have a question, maybe for co-acting city attorney here. And I see item three C and I voted not to add it to the current consent agenda based on my understanding and my question to you. In adding this particular item, I have a concern about process and I think it's the same concern that I had since December when the first complaint came in. My question to you, is there any type of vetting mechanism for these type of, for this particular? I don't know what to call it. Is it a process to have a, an attorney appointed by a special, to have you appoint a special counsel? Have you done any type of vetting before that?
Do you mean in terms of vetting who the special investigator will be?
No, in term of vetting this particular complaint. My understanding, one community member sent in a complaint and now we are appointing a special counsel. Has there been any vetting of this particular complaint before we appoint, before we use city resources to appoint a special counsel?
Thank you for clarifying that. Yes, the code sets a very low bar. If the facts, as they are alleged, would constitute a violation of the code of conduct, then it's a requirement to, to move forward with an investigation. And then the question becomes whether the city attorney's office should handle it or whether it should be a neutral third party. And since the city attorney is a direct council employee, that's where we believe there could be a perception of impropriety if it was investigated by someone employed by the city council.
Okay, thank you. I, I appreciate your, your response here is that you mentioned that there could potentially be a violation and that's why this particular council is being appointed at this time.
If the facts as alleged are true, it's not a finding by the city attorney's office that we believe there's probable cause or any sort of threshold like that.
Thank you.
Anything else or perhaps a motion?
I moved it past the consent agenda?
Second. I think Tara got it first, so we have a, a motion and a second. Elisha, if we can do a roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We'll start tonight's roll call for the consent agenda items A through C with Mayor Protim Wallach.
You're muted, Mark.
Probably better that way. Yes.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Weiner?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes, on three A and three B. I'll recuse on three C.
Thank you, sir. Benjamin?
Yes.
Mayor Bronken?
Yes.
Councilmember Folkords?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
And Spear?
Yes.
The consent agendas items A through C are hereby passed unanimously, noting the recusal of Councilmember Yates on item three C.
Thanks so much. Can we go into our call-up check-in, please?
Yes, sir. Call-up check-ins are number four on tonight's agenda. Four A is the concept plan review and comment request for a proposal to redevelop the site at 2700, 2710, 2720 and 2750 Baseline Road and also 2765 and 2800 Moorhead Avenue. As a mixed-use student housing development that includes 84 units within a four-story, four-story, 55-foot-tall building on the western portion of the site. This is reviewed under case number LUR 20-22-00058.
And I believe we have Chandler Von Scott here for a short presentation.
Yes. Thank you, councilmembers. May I be allowed to share my screen, please? Go ahead, Chandler. That's right now. Yep. Okay, can everyone see that and not my notes?
Nothing's up yet.
Nothing is up yet?
Now it is.
Ah, okay. Good evening, city council. As mentioned, this will be a brief presentation on the 2700 Baseline Road Concept Plan Call-Up Before You Tonight. So as you are probably aware, the concept plan purpose is to provide general feedback to the applicant. There is no approval or denial associated with this hearing tonight. This was discussed at April 25th by the planning board and is now within the 38 call-up period, which concludes, concludes on March 24th. So in terms of public notification for this, written notice was sent out to property owners within 600 feet. The applicant also performed a degree of outreach on their own. Notice was posted. We have received several comments from neighboring property owners. The majority opposed, some in favor. Primary concerns include traffic, parking, lack of retail space and the scale of the proposed development. The location, so the subject property, it's at the southwest of the intersection of US 36 and Baseline Road, as you can see here. The BVCP land use designation for the site is community business. This is described as areas that are the focal point for commercial activity, serving a sub-community or a collection of neighborhoods. The zoning for the site is BC2, which is Business Community 2. And as you can see, it's adjacent to RL1 zoning, the Martin Acres Neighborhood to the south, RH5 zoning, and then BT1 and public zoning for the University of Colorado across Baseline to the north. So for surrounding context, we'll go over this quickly. The character of the surrounding area is varied and eclectic. There are some high-density residential apartments very near the site, the Union Apartments and Creekside Apartments, which are three and five stories respectively. There's the Basemar Shopping Center across 27th, just to the west. The Martin Acres Neighborhood lies to the southeast and then the CU main campus is across Baseline to the north. This is just another shot of context, looking from the west. And you can see the U Club Apartments and the Hub Boulder Site, which are on the east side of 28th and then Williams Village, a little bit further on. This is a shot of the existing site. It's, was formerly contaminated, but it has been remediated. You can see that Skunk Creek runs through the center of the site. But other than that, the site is highly developed. There's some vacant buildings. There's Baseline Liquor, Grease Monkey, Boulder Gas, Nix Auto. Another shot of the existing site, the Baseline Liquors sign, the Grease Monkey and the existing gas station. As I mentioned in the memo, but didn't show all the pictures, just to keep it brief. There are a number of access points. Essentially every business on the site right now has its own vehicular access, either off of 27th Way or off of Moorhead Avenue. So access and circulation on the site is currently a bit of a mess. The site is located within the regulatory floodplain, including the 100-year conveyance and high-hazard zones. So the proposed project is a four-story, 55-foot-tall mixed-use student housing development. It would include 84 units. The development is consolidated on the east side of the site, on the east side of Skunk Creek, which leaves a large 1.2 acre landscaped open space area on the west side. The applicant is requesting a 25% parking reduction and that is to provide 166 parking spaces where 222 are required by code in BC2. So as you can see on the site plan here, access would be taken from Moorhead as well as the US 36 Frontage Road would provide kind of a back access and drop-off point. There is a proposed pedestrian connection across the site linking from the sidewalk on Moorhead to the existing multi-use paths. They are preserving floodplain wetland buffer and again, creating the, the large open space area on the southeast portion of the site. The total floor area of the proposed development is 136,694 square feet. That includes about 1,700 square feet of retail space and then about 95,000 square feet of open space where 50,400 is required. So the application packet does not include specific architectural renderings for the project. The applicant has provided numerous reference images as well as detailed massing studies showing the intent behind the proposed massing. The applicant's written statement expresses a desire to provide a transition in massing from the northwest to the south and east sides of the building with the corner of Moorhead Ave and 27th Way being two stories in height to be compatible with the existing two-story commercial uses across 27th Way to the west. As you can see, the proposed building design also incorporates changes in plane, articulation, vertical elements, step backs and changes in materiality to create visual interest and break down the perceived massing. Here are some of the reference images that were included in the concept review packet. So a summary of the modifications that there would be requesting through site review. There's a 25% parking reduction, as I mentioned previously, a height modification to allow for a 55-foot building where 35 is the maximum by right height in BC2. Modification to the maximum number of stories to allow for four stories where three is the maximum. Just a note that the community benefit regulations from the Boulder Revised Code for height modifications would apply. So the bonus floor area would be used to determine the required number of bonus units above the 25% inclusionary housing requirement. So what this results in is that for the additional stories and additional floor area above three stories, they would have to pay additional cash and loo. And that is what they have indicated they would, are intending to do, is pay cash and loo. And so they would have to pay additional cash and loo based on the additional floor area that they are getting. So to discuss the planning board hearing quickly, on April 25th, 2023, the planning board heard presentations. 19 members of the public spoke during the public comments portion. The majority of speakers expressed opposition to the project based on a number of perceived impacts, including increased traffic and spill-over parking issues, flood impacts, neighborhood compatibility issues, loss of the existing retail space and lack of onsite affordable units. There were several speakers who expressed tentative support for the proposal, but desired to see additional retail space, improved pedestrian connectivity and reduced height. The planning board discussed three key issues. The first was whether the concept plan is generally compatible with the BVCP. The second was whether the planning board had feedback for the applicant on the conceptual site plan and building design. And the third was whether the planning board would be theoretically supportive of the proposed building height of 55 feet. So for key issue number one, the board generally found the proposal to add student housing to the project site to be consistent with BVCP goals and policies. They found that it was an appropriate location for student housing. They agreed with staff's findings that the project will need to incorporate additional retail space in order to be consistent with the community business land use designation and BC2 zone requirements. Some board members expressed a desire to see a more thorough analysis of parking and traffic impacts at time of site review. And one board member expressed the desire for the applicant to retain existing businesses on the site. So for key issue number two, which was feedback on the site plan and building design, the board discussed a variety of different themes. Some of them included the need for additional public outreach in the design process, more activation on the primary ground level frontages, courtyard or other features to improve permeability between the building and the open space on the east side of the site and a desire to see more detailed open space programming. Several board members indicated they would like to see a robust transportation demand management plan at time of site review. Analysis of site access, including the garage entry, where access is located, how circulation works and analysis of traffic patterns on Moorhead and 27th Way. The board generally agreed with staff's comments regarding access, open space and building massing. Additional considerations expressed by individual board members included reducing the building height, reducing amenity space, improving the north building facade design and incorporating noise mitigation factors. Key issue number three, which was whether the proposed building height of 55 feet is generally proportional to the height of existing buildings. Three board members expressed support for the proposed 55-foot building height, but emphasized the need for excellent building design and appropriate transitions and massing to reduce the perceived mass. Two board members were unsure about whether the proposed height would be supportable and indicated the need for more details. And two board members indicated that they did not support the proposed height and would prefer a maximum height of 45 feet. So next steps, following the concept review hearing, city council may vote to call the item up for a council hearing to provide additional feedback. That would be tonight. City council may refer the concept plan to TAB and/or DAB. The applicant will then either proceed with submitting development review applications or may submit a second concept review application. Or they would have to come back for a public hearing if you decide to call it up. A site review application will require a decision by planning board subject to call up by city council. And now I'm happy to take any questions. And now I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks Chandler. Any questions for Chandler? I'm not seeing any. So any comments or desire to call this up from folks?
Just given the amount of sort of bike infrastructure and how all those paths crisscross in there, I would be interested in having TAB look at this.
Okay, very good. We can do it. Maybe I'll just, well, let other people make their comments, then I'll come back to that. Matt, and then Mark, and then I got something. And Tara.
Thanks, Aaron. And Lauren, I like where you're going with that. My comment really centers around hopefully perhaps looking at reducing the parking even further, and hopefully the folks developing this will see opportunities to further reduce massing. This with so much transit and so much proximity for student housing, I see it could perhaps going down there. But I'd also, in balance, want to have us also consider maybe an NPP for parts of Martin Acres to help reduce those spillover impacts of parking that may go in that area. So I think we can have sort of a balanced approach to reduce even more of that parking, since that sort of becomes obsolete almost the day we build and bake in that parking with sort of our long-term transit and also climate goals. So I think we can play both sides of that equation and get to a good result.
Thanks for that, Matt. Although, we might should clarify, I think NPP, the neighborhood parking permits, can only be created by the request of neighbors themselves. I don't think that's something we can do on our own, but point well taken. And correct me if I got that wrong, anybody. Great. Mark, and then Tara, and then myself?
Yeah, I would support referring this to both DAB and TAB. This seems to have an unusual number of concerns and qualifications at the planning board level in terms of comments from the public. It seems a little undercooked to me as a proposal. I don't know that it's ready for us to make a decision as to whether we review it or not. I'd like to see them go back and address a number of those concerns before moving forward.
Are you calling it al dente, Mark?
Very al dente.
Tara?
I don't, I'm going to disagree for the first time in a long time. I was not sure. I don't think we should reduce the parking anymore, because I am already concerned about the spillover. I think it's a great project. Let me just start out by saying. It's a perfect location for student housing, but I don't think we should reduce the parking anymore. The neighborhoods are, the neighbors are already worried about the spillover parking, and it's not that easy, I found out, to do neighborhood parking plans everywhere. So for that reason, I'm going to disagree with you on that. But I did go to the community meeting at one of the locations that this company has, and I was really impressed with the inside, the outside, the way it was run, the way they listened to community, and the amount of community outreach they've already done. I just want to say that it's been good. And we took a walk down towards where this location is by the alleged creek, which, if you can call it that, what was the name of that creek that had a lot of garbage in it?
Skunk Creek. It's lovely at the right time of year.
And so I do want to say that it was great to actually visualize it, to go down there and visualize it, and I think it could do some good for that area. So I do want to thank the amount of community outreach. Of course, you can never have too much community outreach now, can you? So as far as retail goes, I think this might be apropos or not, we have a lot of vacancies at baseline, the baseline shopping center right now. So now, not that I don't think it's a great idea to have neighborhood retail on the first floor, but we are having trouble in the city actually getting people to lease the said first-floor retail. So I'm happy with the amount of retail that they have right now. That's just what I have to say about studying it and going down there and living right near there and biking through there. I'm going to agree with Lauren that I am concerned about the bike paths and how they're going to work out. I do like the buffer of the park. I think that is a really great feature. So I just wanted to bring out some of the good features that I've noticed since I go there almost every day on my little bike path. Thank you.
Thanks, Tara. I'll call in myself and say I don't feel the need to call this up. I think the project is going in a good direction. I think that's a good location for student housing. I appreciate that they're putting that park on the southeast area next to the single-family home neighborhood. I think that's a good choice. I support from my colleagues the idea of referring it to TAB. Thanks, Lauren. I think that seems like a reasonable idea, and I'm certainly happy to send it to DAB as well for some design feedback. And I generally thought the planning board comments were good. I thought planning board did a great review of it and had some excellent comments on that. I'll just say on the retail, I know the neighbors have a desire for more retail there. If it's sustainable from an economic feasibility standpoint, I think that would be positive to have additional retail in a walkable distance from this development and all the neighbors. So if it's doable, fantastic. If it's not economically feasible, like Tara says, having empty retail spaces sitting there for years is not to the benefit of anybody. And with, and I'll say on the parking question, with a good enough transportation demand management plan, if you really do that very well, I think you could support some additional lowering in the parking amounts as well. So those are my thoughts. So I'm not generally hearing any desire to call this up. Did anybody want to make a motion to that effect, or? I'm not seeing anybody jump to that. But I have heard a desire to send it to TAB and potentially DAB. If somebody wanted to make a motion to that effect, certainly could.
I'd like to make a motion to send this to TAB and DAB.
A second.
Okay, yes, Nicole, go ahead.
Thanks. I fully support this. And one of the things, though, that I'm wondering that I hear are the concerns of the Martin Acres neighbors. And I don't know if TAB could speak to this, and if this is the right time, but something about, you know, how we deal with the fact that a lot of CU staff and students and faculty do use that area as basically a parking lot for CU, right? And I get, you know, just kind of the extra traffic and things that adds. And so I don't know if there's something that, you know, we could also be thinking about, what are we doing in this area of town to try to encourage more folks to leave their cars a little bit farther out, like maybe at a parking ride or something like that, rather than kind of driving it in to that neighborhood? So I don't know if this is the right time to think about that, but it may be just given some of the parking concerns. But that would be something I would be interested in hearing from TAB, is, you know, is there anything as part of this project that could help shift where folks are?
I second that.
Rachel?
This is a little bit off-topic here, but I want to call to Nicole's request. And if we're, if we are going to look at something like that, I think it probably needs to be broader. We've heard a lot from people across from Willville with the same kind of themes, so not just Martin Acres, but also anywhere that there's a lot of, I think, student density with cars that CU doesn't provide parking for seems to be an issue.
Right. I'll just throw in real quickly, I think that those are great topics to consider in general, and hopefully the TAB can think about those. But just caution that any one project can't be required to make changes about larger citywide problems. So just throw that caution in there. And, okay, so we got a motion and a second on the table to refer to TAB and DAB. Show of hands, all in favor? And that's unanimous. Great. Okay, Chandler, thanks so much. Think you got what you needed? Great.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good night. All right. Alicia, if we can move to our first public hearing of the night, please.
Yes, sir, and thank you. Our public hearings are item number five on tonight's agenda. Five A is our consideration of a motion to approve the Upper Goose and Two Mile Canyon Creek, that's referenced as UGT, the flood mitigation plan.
Nuriel?
Thank you, Mayor. So as staff gets settled, we've got quite a presentation. We've heard a lot from community. I'll say that last year, if you'll recall, you approved the Comprehensive Stormwater and Flood Master Plan that highlighted sort of the vast amount of flood protection needs across the city's sixteen drainages. And you might recall that as we presented it, the team had really taken a lot of efforts to highlight the use of the racial equity instrument as we did some of that work. Tonight, you're going to hear about the Upper Goose Creek and Two Mile Canyon Creek Flood Mitigation Plan. As you'll hear from staff, there are always trade-offs in any particular project, and we're going to try to strike that balance between life safety benefits and the personal property and environmental impacts. We know those impacts have been subject of intense community conversation. We know you have received a lot of those. And so we will try to highlight and respond to some of the information that we have gotten in the past few weeks. And so I will, now that staff and I bought you enough time to get settled, I will send that over to Utilities Director Joe Tatiucci.
Hopefully enough time for Brandon to get his PowerPoint going. But good evening, Mayor and members of council. As Nuriya mentioned, I'm Joe Tatiucci. I'm the Director of Utilities, and I am here with Brandon Coleman. Brandon leads our stormwater and flood engineering team, and he will be taking the lead on our presentation tonight. But before I turn it over to Brandon, I did want to hit a few, highlight a few things. First, what is before you tonight is a mitigation plan. And for each of the city's drainages, and Brandon will cover this in a little more detail in his presentation, there are several big-picture process steps, starting with mapping studies, and then we do mitigation plans, and then move into design and construction. So for the situation tonight, we're at the mitigation plan stage, and that's where we choose between alternatives for a general concept to advance for the design development and then construction. And so for this particular plan, in terms of alternatives and concepts, we looked at over thirty alternatives. So we're really at the concept phase tonight, and there has been a lot of public interest and concern that this is maybe really far down the road, and that's not the case. I just wanted to clarify that as a plan moves into design and construction, there's still a lot of opportunity for community input and engagement, and for the community members to shape the design as we move forward. Also wanted to mention that I believe we have a few Columbine Elementary students with us tonight from the Classrooms for Climate Action Group, and they'll be speaking under the public hearing portion, and talking about a class project that they did associated with tonight's plan. And I think they presented to a few of the council members and board members earlier on that. So we appreciate their engagement, and I'm not sure how long this item will take, and if it'll be past people's bedtimes, but hopefully they will get a chance to see what it looks like when we wrestle with all of the trade-offs on a project like this. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brandon.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Appreciate that. And as Joe mentioned, I'm Brandon Coleman. I'm the Engineering Manager in the Storm-Flood Utility. And tonight, we're requesting action on the Upper Goose Two Mile Canyon Creek Flood Mitigation Plan. And I do just want to say, this plan has been a long, hard effort, and it hasn't been me working on it solely. We do have a consultant team with ICAUN Engineering. We have, the Mile High Flood District has been a partner on the project, and also lots of staff have been involved in the project. So just want to say a thanks to them. And then with that, we also do have a really engaged community. So thanks to the community for being engaged. I think it really helps us frame these projects and understand concerns as we move forward. So just starting off, I'm going to cover some general flood information about the city. And starting off, Boulder is the number one flood risk in the state of Colorado. And as a storm-flood utility, our mission is really protection of life, safety, and property. And this photo on this slide is from Two Mile Canyon Creek, right at Broadway, during the 2013 flood most recently. So as a storm-flood utility, we are responsible for flood mitigation on all sixteen of our major drainage ways in the city, and this includes Upper Goose Creek and Two Mile Canyon Creek as well. And when we do flood mitigation, we typically follow a life cycle approach, as you can see here. So that really starts by our floodplain mapping efforts. And these efforts are really to identify the flood risk related to these drainage ways across the city. And we really focus on the one percent recurrence in a fall, so that would be a one percent chance of flood in any given year, and commonly referred to as the Hundred Year Flood. And then next, we move to the phase we're here tonight to discuss, and that's really our mitigation planning phase. And we come up with concepts, alternatives. We really focus on community engagement in this phase, and and hopefully our proposed solutions are trying to balance the need for flood mitigation and also the community's interests and concerns. And lastly, once we have the overall plan, and it's a system-wide approach, and that really allows us to make for continuous improvements, we move to the design and construction phase. And in that phase, that's really where we develop the design details, deal with some of the more technical engineering challenges related to the proposed plan. So again, tonight, we're just here talking about the mitigation planning phase. And as Joe mentioned, we considered over thirty alternatives for this plan. So we also have just recently updated our Comprehensive Flood and Stormwater Master Plan, and this life cycle approach was continued in this plan, and it was really developed in our 2004 Comprehensive Flood and Stormwater Master Plan. So the twenty-two, 2022 CFS updated, update also had, gave us some key goals for the utility, and they included prioritizing projects to do the greatest good first, providing our services equitably, making infrastructure resilient to climate change, prepare for extremes, inform the community to create a prepared community, and also maintenance of the system we currently have. And in response to that, we heard a strong desire in the city to implement these projects much more quickly than we've been doing in the past. So just the need for flood mitigation. There's always a question of why do we need to do flood mitigation? Doesn't it work as well as it is? We haven't been flooded. So I just wanted to share this. So this is the Upper Two, or the Two Mile Canyon Creek and Upper Goose Drainage Basin, and this image is from 1938. So you can see a few things in this image, starting with Goose Creek in the lower part of the image, and then Two Mile Canyon Creek, which is a classic alluvial system. You can see the fan up there in the upper-left-hand side of the creek. And then there's a few key features that historically have been there or are remaining there. So you can see North Boulder Park. This is the future site of North Boulder Park. It's existing as a lake in this image. And then also Long's Gardens, historical Long Gardens is shown here as well. And just to get bearings, there are a few roadways that still exist. So Nineteenth Street is highlighted here, and also Iris Avenue, just so you can get your bearings in the city. And really, the important thing to notice about this photograph is there's a lot of agricultural land use. There is some development there, but you can see the historic drainage paths, and you can also see an agricultural-type land use here. So moving forward to 2022, this is the same area, same image, but you can see pretty stark difference. So a lot of houses, and in some cases, the natural drainage ways have been built over completely. And this is just a result of our utilities relatively young. So we were founded, or we were started in 1973, and a lot of this development happened prior to that, prior to the knowledge of where the floodplains were. So I just wanted to highlight this as really what the need for flood mitigation is for these drainage So next, as I mentioned, we started with floodplain mapping for this project. So this is the Two Mile Canyon Creek Drainage Way in Upper Goose, and this mapping was updated in 2015 and adopted by the city in FEMA. And this figure is showing the one hundred year, or the one percent chance of flooding in any given year. And there's also a city-specific zone shown here, which is our high hazard zone shown in red. And that zone's designated as the greatest risk to life safety, and that's really based on depth and velocity of flow that could sweep a person off of their feet during a flood event. And it's important to point out that Two Mile Canyon Creek is an alluvial floodplain, which means flow spreads out in larger storm events. And this is shown here in the five-hundred-year floodplain, which is a zero-point, zero-two percent chance of occurrence in any given year, or the five-hundred-year floodplain. But it also indicates risk of shallow flooding in a hundred-year floodplain. So our flood mitigation plan really tried to take that into account in our proposed improvements. So based on the approved floodplain mapping and the simulated one hundred-year flood, the estimated dam- the estimated damages we would expect in a hundred year flood in these two drainage ways for Two Mile Canyon Creek and Upper Goose Creek would be on the order of a hundred and ninety-five million dollars of potential damage. And that includes seven hundred and, oh boy, I can't see it, about seven hundred and fifty structures. So we do have a recent flood event as a good reference. So 2013, we saw significant flooding in particularly the Two Mile Canyon Creek Drainage Ways. And there was definitely a wide range of personal experiences from the 2013 flood. The event was not relatable to the hundred year flood that I mentioned in the mapping. It was really a long duration event. So it occurred over multiple days. And we didn't see very high peak intensities out of that. So it was kind of a different storm event. But Two Mile Canyon Creek around Linden, we did see two fatalities related to the flood on that drainage way. And it was really from people who were in their vehicle trying to cross floodwaters during the time. And it's just a good reminder that most flood related deaths happen in or around vehicles. So just for the community and everybody listening, just if you ever are in a flood, never drive your car across floodwaters as well. And then the damages that we saw from Two Mile Canyon Creek from the city, we did see significant damages. All these photos shown here are from the Two Mile Canyon Creek Drainage Way. We estimated damages of about thirty-nine million dollars from 2013. So as I've mentioned, this project's been going on. We've been in the mitigation planning phase since the mapping update in 2015. We did present our draft recommendations to the Water Resources Advisory Board in 2021. And with community information sessions following those presentations of those draft recommendations to try and let everybody know what the proposal was. Our Water Resources Advisory Board recommended approval of the mitigation plan to City Council at their May 2023 meeting by a vote of five to zero. And that's what we're here talking about tonight as well. So as men, as I mentioned previously, community engagement's a key component around this, this part of the planning process. And so we did have a significant community engagement effort in 2017 and 2018, really to evaluate alternatives. And there was a lot of, we heard support for flood mitigation from the community. We also heard lots of concern from private property owners about private property impacts, trees, existing wildlife corridors, and how those would be impacted by the proposed projects. There was also concern around potential impacts to Long's Garden and North Boulder Park. So as part of this plan, we have no detention alternatives recommended for North Boulder Park or Long's Garden. And also, we're not recommending public access along Goose Creek near the Edgewood Drive section. And as a reminder, the utility, so this is just the planning phase as we've been mentioning. And we're really looking to work with, continuing to work with private property owner and private property owners as we move into the design and construction phase as well. So I just want to mention, when we brought this to RAB, it was 2021. The pandemic hit relatively quickly after that, which slowed down some of our community engagement efforts. And we were able to pick those efforts back up again in 2022 and in 2023. And we really wanted to try and inform the community about what the recommended alternatives were. So we included website updates, a virtual map. We did a virtual information session, an in-person information session at Columbine Elementary, followed by more email responses and some additional neighborhood meetings with concerned neighbors. So for the alternatives that we considered, as a utility, we really have some tools in our toolbox. We did consider over thirty alternatives through both of these drainage ways. And the way we approach flood mitigation is we can consider open channels. And we really focus on places where there's existing open channels just for the natural stream processes, which we think is probably the most resilient approach to flood mitigation. There's storm pipe alternatives. So in places where we don't have existing natural drainage ways, or they've been developed over, we would consider storm pipe. Roadway conveyance, which is not a preferred alternative, but utilizing existing roadways. Detention, which could minimize downstream improvements and could be a cost saving measures, but require large open areas. And then with these drainage ways and a lot of drainage ways in Boulder, sediment capture is really important because we are moving a lot of sediment from the mountains into town. So sediment capture was also considered as part of the alternatives. And the design for our open channel, so this is really, our industry and our approach to flood mitigation is really focused on nature based solutions. So this is a photo from our recently completed Wonderland Creek Greenways Project, which was completed after 2013. And you can see it is an engineered channel. So there are definitely engineered features in there. But we also incorporated a lot of natural features. So wetlands, trying to create wetlands, revegetation practices and also native vegetation. And these methods, if they work and are implemented appropriately, also serve as a lower maintenance solution for flood mitigation into the future. So this slide is the proposed recommendations. And I'd be happy to go into any of these in more details, but I'll just give a brief overview right now. So Two Mile Canyon Creek is in the red boxes. And you can see it starts initially up at Linden Avenue with hundred year channel improvements and sediment capture. We're very space constrained as we move into the next reach through the neighborhood. So we have less than hundred year channel improvements. And then, as I mentioned, the historic drainage way has actually been built over on Two Mile Canyon Creek. So we proposed a drain system essentially from Two Mile Canyon Creek to the confluence with Goose Creek on the lower right hand side of the screen. And we've also considered two alternative alignments, just looking at where the historic flow path is for where we would outlet to Goose Creek. So we have heard recently, community support for the alternative alignment shown down Floral Drive right now for that storm pipe. So I just wanted to point out those two alternatives are still considered in this plan. And then the Goose Creek alternatives are shown on the lower portion of the screen. They start at North Boulder Park. And as I mentioned, there's no detention being proposed in North Boulder Park. We have an inlet structure that transitions to a new open channel that would be incorporated into the Alpine Balsam property. Then we would transition to a storm pipe in a reach where we have no existing channel. And then we would propose enhancing the existing channel behind North Street. And then transitioning again to a storm pipe prior to discharge to the stretch of Goose Creek behind Edgewood Drive to its confluence with Two Mile Canyon Creek. So for flood mitigation costs, we estimated these in twenty, twenty dollars. And you can see the proposed mitigation for both drainage ways is a combination of open channel improvements and culvert improvements. And we would expect that would remove approximately five hundred and twenty-seven structures from the floodplain. And the overall improvements for both drainage ways would be about forty-three million dollars. And just in summary, I just want to say we are at the mitigation planning phase. So really, the action we're asking for tonight would allow us to move into the design phase, where we'd be able to look at some of these more engineering details, some of the details related to what these open channels could look like, and also continuing engaging with property owners who would be impacted. It's really important to note out that we don't, the city does not own all the land that I just showed on the proposed mitigation plan. So easement acquisition would be a huge component of all of these improvements. And we'd have to work with each private property owner for those easement acquisitions into the future. And in your packet, there's proposed motion language. So motion to approve the Upper Goose Creek and Two Mile Canyon Creek Flood Mitigation Plan. And with that, that's all the presentation I have for tonight. So we'll take any questions.
And before turning it over for questions, I just wanted to mention at CAC on Monday, there was a request for a RAB representative to be present. And so we have John Bergerin, who is our RAB co-chair. He's actually on a business trip in New York, but was willing to join us virtually. And I think he's prepared to summarize some thoughts from RAB, if you'd like to hear that before we turn it over.
Absolutely. John, thanks for joining us and going above and beyond on your business trip. So interested to hear perspective from, from yourself and from RAB, please.
Yeah, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Great, thanks for having me. And it's part business, part pleasure. So this trip is not all, all fun. But so I am co-chair on RAB, been on the board since 2020. And have been following the Goose Creek Project, Up Goose Creek, Two Mile Canyon Creek Project. And I just want to, wanted to disclose, as I did in the March RAB Board Meeting, that I do live and own property in the Upper Goose Creek Drainage. So wanted to disclose that. But as Brandon had covered, this plan has come to RAB a couple of times in the draft plan in 2021, and then more recently, the proposed plan that you all were discussing tonight in our March 2020 meeting. Both times, we've gotten pretty good discussion from the board on, on the, on the plan itself. There's, you know, over the years, there's been, from our perspective, this question of whether we can do hundred year mitigation or not. As, as Brandon and others, there's significant challenges in both drainages. And then, so it was kind of the big question is can we get to a hundred year mitigation? And with this final proposed plan before you tonight, it is pretty impressive that for the most part, a hundred year mitigation is, is the plan for, for most areas of these drainage ways, with all those benefits that as mentioned. So when it's come before RAB, we've had a lot of questions. We, the city staff, utility staff have been great at answering our questions. You know, we, discussions have ranged for what is the existing infrastructure and how functional it is now, and if we just maintained it better, could you get some of the flood benefits? We had, you know, questions about, you know, the 2013 flood that we, everyone knows so well. That was, you know, ten years ago. And how come we're talking about finally doing a hundred year mitigation now? Questions about how this fits into the larger comprehensive flood and storm water master plan and, and priorities of this, of this project versus other projects. And a lot of questions, again, going back to the maintenance issue. And, and let's say this project built, will it be maintained in the future? A lot of, we've heard from some residents that they're concerned about existing maintenance questions. You know, a lot of discussions, as Brandon mentioned, there's significant easement acquisition required. And so we did several questions and discussions about what that actually looks like for property owners. And other, I think the other kind of big thing that came up was the importance of that public engagement and going forward as if this plan is, is approved as it stands today, ensuring that through the design and construction phase, that significant public engagement is continued. As Brandon mentioned, that we've heard a lot from residents in the drainages about concerns to their private property to wildlife corridors. So, and we want to make sure that those, those legitimate concerns are heard by the, by utilities and addressed as you move into the design and construction phase. And I think I'll leave it at that. That kind of quickly summarizes, it's been a multi-year thing with, with RAB. And so I'm happy, I think there's time, I'm happy to answer any questions if I can. Otherwise, I will let y'all get back to it.
Thanks so much for that, John. Do we have any questions for John, then maybe we can let him go? I know it's getting on ten o'clock in New York. Seeing none, we'll just give you another thank you, John, for your, for your work and for being here.
My pleasure.
Great. Any questions for city staff about the presentation in the matter?
Thanks. I don't know if this is for Joe or Brandon. I, I think we've, we've done some flood mitigation work in other drainages in, in the past here in the city. And I wonder if staff could elaborate a little bit more on the recovery of plant and wildlife around those, when there's been disruption and there's been digging and channelization and ditching and so on and so forth. How long it takes nature to kind of heal itself and recover some of those, those areas where there's been some, some damage? Could you elaborate on that a little bit more?
You want to start with that one?
Sure.
Yeah, thanks, Bob. I, I did put together a few example projects. And so I'll just pull up that to kind of talk to here. So as I mentioned, we do really focus on doing a nature based solution. So we, as a utility, don't see a wildlife corridor or nature as separate from flood mitigation. We like to incorporate those two things as best we can. So we do try and protect high value trees where we can and incorporate new vegetation if we do have to remove trees or wetlands type vegetation. And that's a purity requirement and also a city requirement through our forestry department. And the projects I've shown here, just for reference, the Wonderland Creek Project, which was recently completed in 2015. We're getting ready to be released from our 404 permit from the Corps for that project. So we have seen good wetlands establishment. We, we will have to wait for the trees to grow back up to some of those larger trees that were grown or that had to be removed as part of that project. Another area that's an engineered channel, but really this nature based approach is Boulder Creek. So this is Evan Vine Park. Boulder Creek's a really natural system. But it's also, there's a lot of engineered structures and drop structures and also erosion control measures along Boulder Creek. And then most recently, and it's just good to point out, there will be temporary impacts from the project. But we try and do our best to limit those to the project footprint. And this was a project we completed last year up on Bear Creek by Bear Creek Elementary. And you can see it's pretty barren at the moment, but we're starting to see grasses come back. And we had to remove about three major cottonwoods for this project. And we replanted about ten trees out there as part of that project. And granted, they are definitely not as big. When we remove those trees, we pay back into the forestry fund for further forestry management, as well as replacing in kind and usually above and beyond where we're at. So those were the three kind of example projects we have.
Great, thanks, Brandon.
Nicole, Rachel, Mark Matt.
Thanks so much for the presentation. And I imagine it's exciting for you to see this, this moving through the process. I just wanted to confirm a couple of things that I think I heard, just to make sure. So this project is being done based on the new storm and floodwater master plan, right? So it, it did take into account some of the newer features like the social vulnerability index, is that right?
Yes, I, I'm also, I'm just going to speak to that a little bit. So a key component of our comprehensive flood and storm water master plan was to be able to prioritize projects across the city. So one of our major metrics that we heard from the community and also included was equity. And the way we're scoring these projects, we, we do not have the full score yet, but we'll be presenting it to RAB this year based on this prioritization framework and using the full social vulnerability index. So we've incorporated these proposed projects, even in their draft frame, into that prioritization criteria. So we will see where they rank out compared to all the other projects across the city.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And it seems like you're jumping into that a little sooner than, than I at least expected. So appreciate that. I think it's an important measure. And I just want to make sure I've got my numbers about right. So if we leave it as is and don't kind of make changes, there's over seven hundred homes and businesses that are affected. If we address it with this plan, we're basically removing about five hundred of those. Did I get that right? So like seventy-five percent of folks will be then out of the, okay, great.
It, it's probably good just to clarify, we're not actually modifying any of those structures as part of this plan. It's just our mitigation efforts would remap the floodplain. So that's why it's a life cycle approach. Once we construct these improvements, we would remap the floodplain. And then some of those structures would be removed from risk.
Thank you. And I was just wondering too, I mean, you know, sometimes when you're up there after heavy rains, right? There's some streets that just have a lot of water and things. Are there areas that'll see improvements outside of that kind of hundred year flood event? So will, you know, will, will anybody notice some immediate impacts from some of these changes?
I'll give Brandon a little break here. So the, the businesses in that area around Alpine Balsam and like, like Ideal Market, right now, every time in the summer, we have a significant thunderstorm, that area ponds up and it kind of turns into a lake or a pond, and it's temporary. And not hazardous, but it's a real nuisance. And as Brandon showed, the nineteen thirty-eight photo versus what the development looks like now, that all took place before we had kind of the modern floodplain. that all took place before we had kind of the modern floodplain regulations. And so our systems just are not great in that area. Some of the capital infrastructure that would be part of this plan would improve that situation where we get the, just the local thunderstorm, not even necessarily 100-year flood level of event. So some of that investment would help that as we move this forward.
Thank you. And I just have one other question, just want to confirm again. It sounds like there weren't any alternatives that wouldn't require channel improvements. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So essentially, to meet our flood mitigation goals as a city, we would need to improve the open channel sections where we can and also add conveyance where we don't currently have it.
Thank you.
And if I can just add to that, a lot of the community input and the emails that council received were concerning an area around Reach Number Six. And there's, I think there's a belief and a hope that of the 30 alternatives that we studied, maybe if staff had had recommended a different one to move forward, we could avoid the channel improvements in that reach. And that's just really not the case. We did look at storage in North Boulder Park and some other things like that. So what it really boils down to is we can, we can leave the system as it is now and not have any impacts in Reach Number Six. And so then we would have a less than 10-year level of flood protection. But if we're going to have any level of enhanced flood protection, unfortunately, there has to be some channel improvements in that area.
Rachel.
Thanks. Brandon, I wrote down classic alluvial system. It's so nice to see you and hear words like that.
Thanks.
So I guess maybe following up on Nicole's last question, so, you know, if we, if we were to say, well, let's not do anything then within, with the Reach Six. Is that, and then we're at less than 10 years, is that just for like one street? Or is that for all of it? Like if we were to say we're going to carve that out, are there ripple effects on the rest of the system?
I'm happy to take a shot at that, and Brandon can elaborate on it. But Reach Number Six, so this is the Upper Goose and Two Mile Canyon. It's really the western portion of the floodplain. The, from, say, Folsom Street to the east, the Goose Creek drainage has already been improved to 100-year level. And so Reach Number Six is really the most downstream of the portion of this floodplain that we're trying to address. And so if we, if we don't have a way at the most downstream point to handle the flows and we make improvements upstream, we could actually make things worse. And so we really, it has to kind of be a comprehensive, the whole stream has to be done.
Fair to say it's all kind of integrated, then?
For sure.
Okay. And then, you know, I know that there's worry about loss of wetlands and trees, which I empathize with. Is there, and you got to this, Brandon, a bit, but just maybe to have you emphasize it, is there something other than like city council's desires or staff's wishes that restricts us being like brutish to trees and wetlands? What are the restrictions that we might have there?
Sure, yeah. So as a utility, we do public engagement, but there's no formal requirement in the design and construction stage. Really, what binds us is federal regulatory permitting. So pretty much any major drainage way in the city, when we work in, we have to work with the Army Corps of Engineers for Waters of the U.S. So they regulate wetlands impacts across the country. And then through that process, they will also consult for impacts to threaten endangered species, wildlife, historic preservation requirements. So if there was an archaeological site, so that's that whole process we go through at a federal level. And then also at a city level, we have a very restrictive wetlands ordinance as well. And we have to meet that as a utility. So we're not exempt from that. And as any wetlands we impact, we need to mitigate for and replace. And most of the time, we try and do that in the area where the impacts happen.
Thanks. So even if we said go and go fast, you couldn't just go in there with a bulldozer and like do what you wanted, correct? Okay. And then just one more question. We've talked about this being concept. And then next will be design and construction. And I think maybe like design and construction causes some heartburn? Like, is that the same thing? We are going to do this today and then you're going to go and start constructing? Or are these concrete different steps? And at any of these steps, will it come back to council for review?
Very different steps. And typically, for the major capital improvement projects, design can take a year or two before we're ready to do construction. And there are easements needed for this work. And so as we, if the plan's approved tonight and we move into design, part of it would be working with the property owners and kind of having the one-on-one communication to understand in more detail what their concerns are, try to alleviate them and address them. And so there, there's quite a bit of time before there would be any construction activity out there.
And prior to design getting finalized, can it come back to council? Or will it come back to council so that people don't feel like tonight is like the end of the story for us to weigh in?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. So tonight's not the end of the line for public process. It is a major, there are major capital improvement projects associated with this. And those come forward in the, in the budget process every year. And certainly, the ones that have a lot of community interest get highlighted. So we would be talking about that. And then anytime that there's a lot of community interest and concern about something that the city is doing, council can always ask for a check-in with staff and through CAC. And we do that a fair amount and provide updates when asked.
That's all I got. Thanks.
Mark, then Matt?
Fortunately, I have a few questions. Let me start with this one. Looking at the overall plan, how many drainages have yet to be addressed other than this one? In terms of flood mitigation?
Do you have a backup slide for that?
I don't have a backup slide for that, Mark. So right now, through the comprehensive flood and stormwater master plan, we have over 30 identified projects across the city that would go into that prioritization criteria. And as I mentioned, we would continue our mitigation planning. So we may have more projects that get added to that into the future. So right now, we have about 36 projects across the city that we would put into that prioritization framework from a CIP standpoint for flood mitigation.
And do we have an estimated capital cost for all of those?
We did do the estimated capital cost, and we estimated it at about $350 million. So if you remember with the CFS approval that city council gave, we did the, I'm going to have to remind myself. Sorry, one second here.
While Brandon's looking for the information, I would just mention, so we are applying that prioritization formula to all of those projects. I think 39 of them that Brandon just mentioned, we'll be showing that to RAB as part of the budget process. And that'll be coming forward as, as part of the capital improvement package from utilities. So you will be seeing the detail on, on everything else that's planned for the next 30 years soon.
With respect to the, the cost of easement acquisition, is that built into the 43 million? Or is that going to be on top of?
We do have a placeholder in there in the cost estimates right now. It's a very variable cost, I will say. So it's a risky cost, depending on what the negotiations with each property owner result in. So we do have a property acquisition line item in our cost estimates.
And if we do not come to agreement, I assume you're going to need to go to condemnation?
So that, that is an option that the city has, and Aaron may want to speak to that. But so far, in our flood utility projects, we've always been able to negotiate with property owners. And on the Wonderland Creek project that Brandon showed completion pictures for, when we were at this, this stage of that work, there were similar concerns from community members, but we were able to work through that and address them. So it would always be our goal to negotiate and work with the community to get those easements.
Okay. Do you have any idea of how many trees are going to be impacted and have to be cut down? Of size?
We don't yet. I'll say that's something we really try to identify is channel geometry, location alignments, and trees we can save and trees we need to remove would really happen in the next design phase.
If I can, if I can add to that, I would expect there would be some large tree removal. And when we're in the construction phase of these projects, it is impactful. And a lot of earth moving, it's temporary and it does come back. But I definitely want to mention that.
I would have to then ask, you know, when you say you want to work with the private property owners, what does that look like? You know, you've got a design, you've got a location, you're not going to, the property owner says, I'm distressed, you're cutting down my trees, you're not going to not cut down the trees. So what, what does that working with property owners look like in a substantive manner?
Yeah, so our most recent example, and a part of our capital improvement program in utilities, one of our most important, if not the most important, projects is our main sewer improvements. And the, the staff team, working with the city attorneys and some real estate support, just meet one-on-one with the property owners and work through an agreement with each of them. And we eventually get to a legal document, that's, that's an easement. And same thing on the main sewer project. Right now, a lot of those are coming through for signature from the city manager, and I'm looking at those. And so it's a, it's a lengthy process that takes place during the design. One-on-one meetings with, with property owners, just our staff and them. When I say one-on-one, it's not a big group setting. It's each property owner meeting with city staff.
My last question is, is there anything that might be more cost efficient between $43 million plus the cost of acquisition of easements? And zero? The concern I have is, you know, at CU South, we're protecting 2,300 homes, $65 million. And that's about $28,000 a home. In Upper Goose Creek, the cost to remove 82 homes from the floodplain is $235,000 per home. That's just using the numbers you've provided us. That's awfully expensive. And is that the, is the solution that we've got the only solution that is effective and cost efficient? Because, you know, behind this project, as you've mentioned, we've got another $300 million of capital improvements yet to come. And this, this seems, you know, seems to be highly inefficient in terms of the cost. Protecting 759 homes is a wonderful thing, but we're doing it at double the cost, about $56,000 a home, double the cost of what, what it took, cost us to do CU South. And at CU South, we've got lots of side benefits. So I, I'm just asking, is this, is this the only way we can go?
It really is a process of elimination that we go through when we're at this mitigation plan stage. And because of what I described in a, for a previous response to a question, the Edgewood portion, for example, is the most downstream section. And so we have to do that. And if we're to make the stormwater improvements that will address the yearly ponding and pooling that we see during thunderstorms, we really have to do that. So as I've looked at this with the staff team, I don't see a partway solution that still gets us some benefit. One other aspect, and it's a discussion we had internally, I was asking them, could we do something less than 100-year? Could we do a 50-year design or a 25-year design? And could that be a potential compromise that would reduce impacts? And with the concern being along Edgewood, unfortunately, if you look at the floodplain mapping for those lesser levels of flood and, and what we know about construction impacts to do channel improvements, it really wouldn't make a difference. So I, in my experience, looking at these projects and considering alternatives, I don't see an obvious one or one that would lessen the financial impact. And I do know, as well, talking to the team, that the stormwater investments we need to make across the city, because of the issues in this drainage, tend to be a little more concentrated here. And so other areas of the city won't be as expensive. But making the investment will just help us with situations even less than 100-year flood that the community sees impacts from every year, every summer.
Yeah. And Mark, if it's okay, if I could just add to fundamentally, South Boulder Creek flood mitigation is a very cost-effective project because of detention. We're really limited as a utility to where we can do that scale of detention. Kind of speaking back to the slide of just within, within these drainage basins, we don't have a lot of large, open areas where we could do detention. But it is a very cost-effective approach. So we really think this is the best approach for these two drainage ways. And it is going to be more expensive, but it also has a lot of benefits, similar to what I described for the open channel improvements.
Do you mind if I call away real quick, Councilmember Walert?
I do not mind at all, Bill.
Thanks. So I, I remember, or I think I remember from CU South context, like there were a lot of people complaining that it was so expensive for what we were doing. And I was often like, it's a screaming deal, like for what we have done in other places, as I recall. So my question is, if we're not comparing the cost per dwelling at CU South, but rather to some other spots, is this maybe in line with some of those costs?
I can, so as Brandon said, CU South is kind of an outlier when we look at all 39 of those projects in terms of the benefit and how attractive it looks in comparison. And my impression from talking with the team, that what we see here, what's, with what's proposed in this mitigation plan and the projects that will come out of it, the rest of the projects in the city would, would be more like this.
All right, thank you. That's the end of my questions.
All right, Matt, and then I get one quick one.
Thanks. Well, I was to say, colleagues tonight are sharp. I took pretty much all the questions I had, in particular, Bob, Rachel, and Nicole on that. So thank you for saving some oxygen. My question really centers around, I think Mark was kind of touching on it a little bit, this sort of efficiency factor. And if, and Joe's, you're sort of mentioning that if you're looking at even 25 or 50-year flood protection, I would imagine that once you have your equipment in there, you're already in there. And doesn't it just make sense to then just do the work and get to 100? I mean, there's no real sort of, you're not using like a little dingo versus a large excavator. You got your heavy equipment in, and you might as well just get the job done the way it needs to be done. Is that sort of a way to think about how, how equipment would then equate to just going for the 100? Or is, or you using small hand tools versus other things?
We wouldn't be using small hand tools. But you're, what you're saying is correct. It's, if we chose a, a design capacity for the channel or a design flood that was 25-year, it doesn't mean compared to 100-year, the, the equipment would be a quarter of the size. It's still the same equipment. It's still the same general ground disturbance because of the constraints and the geography in this reach. And so it really wouldn't change.
Thanks, Joe. That's all I got.
Great. Well, that actually segues nicely into my question, which was about, so one, the one area where we still have two alternatives, and if we approve this plan, is the piping kind of at the, at the end of the line, right? Whether it comes down to Goose Creek further west or whether it comes in to the east of Reach Six. And so it certainly sounds promising to send a little further downstream. What would be the criteria that we would use to decide between those two options as we move forward to design?
I can give Brandon a second to think about that. But that's an example of something that in the current plan, the water can come down 19th Street in a pipe and connect with the Goose Creek Channel that way. Or it can go down Floral Drive and connect a little bit further downstream. And what we're hearing, especially in the last few weeks from the community, is a strong preference for it to go down Floral Drive. From a technical standpoint for staff, either works equally well. And it makes no difference for us. So it's those types of things that I think there's still some opportunity as the plan goes forward for the community to shape exactly what happens.
Great. Seems to cover it. Yep. And then just following up from that, so I'll come back to that in comments. back to that in comments, but following up from that, if we do the Floral Drive alternative, what's the impact on Reach Six in terms of, you know, how different is the project in Reach Six?
I asked that same question of the team as we were considering this, and we would still need to do the channel improvements. And all the discussion we've had so far with council on your questions, the impacts would not be substantively reduced.
Okay, that's helpful to understand. Thanks. That was mine. Junie, you got something?
Thank you so much. My question, I wanted to ask you earlier, because you mentioned Mile High Flood District, and when I was Mayor Potem, I was appointed to that by the mayor. And I remember, this particular project was heavily disgusted. Disgusted? Disgust.
Disgust. Are you disgusted?
Disgust, sorry, thank you. Heavily discussed. And again, the Mile High Flood District as a board, and the type of expertise that it offers, I wanted you to talk a little bit more about the type of support that this particular project received. And I know one of the questions that Mayor Potem Wallick had is the, how much it's costing the city, but also the type of support that we are getting in order to get this work done. And also, it's not just an issue for Boulder itself, it's an issue for, for, it's a regional issue, and there are so many other experts that are involved as part of that process. So I wanted to hear a little bit more about that, and also the investment from, again, Mile High Flood District and other support that you were getting. Thank you.
Yeah, so the Mile High Flood District, the city is in the Mile High Flood District. They're a great partner for these types of projects, so they can support us in a number of ways. So they can support us with their staff. So we have a watershed manager, they have environmental resources, engineering consultant, construction contractors. They also can provide funding for us. And the first step for us to get Mile High funding for a project like this from a CIP standpoint is for, to have them partner on this mitigation plan. So if they don't, they don't have a role in the mitigation planning, it won't be eligible for Mile High funding. And then they also are a huge educational resource for us as a staff of just being at, that's really where this high-functioning, low-maintenance stream concept came from. It's really been advanced by the Mile High Flood District, and it's given us a lot of great technical resources to be able to design those types of projects.
Good enough. Great. So let's move to the public hearing, then. Thanks for all those great answers.
That's a good question.
Oh, another question.
Maybe it's already lined up like this, but is there any way legally we can move kids to the front of the line who might be up past their bedtime? We so rarely get kids here, and I don't know if anybody is bothered by that, but it's, I think it was almost eight-thirty last night, like, to the clock.
I certainly would support that. We so rarely get young folks here. So if people don't mind, maybe we could start with the young folks. So, do we need to over, like, make a motion to suspend rules, or?
You probably technically should, since it's a change to the rules of procedure.
Good, go for it.
I'd like to make a motion to invite anyone under age eighteen, or under eighteen, to testify first tonight?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. Okay, unanimous. Great, so we're going to start with the young folks. I've got three people signed up to speak, who are under the age of eighteen. Gavin Devens, Ren Bauscher, and Angel Luna Ramirez. And you'll each have two minutes to speak, although I might be a little more lenient with you than with some of your older colleagues in the room here. So Gavin.
Can I have a slideshow for that?
Want a slideshow, too?
Hi, my name is Gavin, and I am a fourth grader at Columbine Elementary School. I am here with two of my classmates to encourage you to vote yes for the city's plan to do flood mitigation on Upper Goose Creek and Two Mile Creek. All the students in fourth grade have been studying climate solutions and climate justice. We know that climate change is real, and it's very important that we prepare for severe weather events in our city. We have been learning that storms are getting bigger and more frequent. We also know that our city is doing a lot to prepare for climate change. The Upper Goose Creek Flood Mitigation Project will help make our city more resilient and will help keep all people safe in the next flood. Now Ren is going to talk about how important flood mitigation is to do to protect our community members.
Thank you, Gavin. Ren, you're up.
Hi, my name is Ren, and we're very grateful for the flood mitigation that has already happened on Lower Goose Creek. There are several reasons why we want that work to continue on Upper Goose Creek. Lower Goose Creek is near our school, and we took a field trip there to learn about flood mitigation and how it is working. On our field trip, we saw how well floodwalls, retention ponds, drop structures, and meanders are working to slow down the water on the Lower Goose Creek. This is keeping people and property safe. We want Upper Goose Creek to have the same opportunities. Next slide, please. In class, we also built flood models and tested how well floodwalls, retention ponds, drop structures, and meanders are working to slow down water. We built our models with different scenarios in mind, and tested how slow water, how to slow water down and absorb water. We know that the flood plan for Upper Goose Creek will be successful in slowing down water, too. Our field trip and our model building convinced us how important flood mitigation is to our community resilience to climate change. Now Angel is going to talk about why doing the greatest good first is important for flood mitigation on Upper Goose Creek.
Thanks, Ren. Angel, es tu turnon?
Hola, mi nombre es Angel. Soy un estudiante de cuarto grado en la escuela de Columbine, y soy un guardián de la tierra. El nuevo plan de la mitigación de inundaciones de la ciudad, siendo lo mejor primero, es otra. En otras palabras, este plan representa poner la comunidad primero. La comunidad es que viven las traílas como yo y otras familias pueden ser afectadas si no realizamos la mitigación necesaria para protegernos de las inundaciones. Una de las razones por qué la justicia es importante es por las personas que no tienen menos recursos pueden ser afectadas que aquellas con mayores recursos. Last slide, please.
Next slide.
Muchas gracias por su tiempo. Espero que puedan ser un gran cambio en nuestra comunidad.
Angel, muchas gracias por tu testimonio.
And certified interpreter, Elena Clever. Hello, my name is Angel. I'm a fourth-grade student in the Columbine Elementary School, and I am an earth guardian. The city's new flood mitigation plan, let's put the best first, doing the best first. In other words, this plan represents putting the community first. The communities who live in the trailer parks, such as myself and other families, could be affected if we don't undertake the needed flood mitigations to protect us from floods. One of the reasons why justice is important is because the people who have fewest resources could be more affected than those with more resources. Thank you very much for your time. I hope that you can make a great change in our community.
Well, thank you all so much for coming and speaking to us. It's impressive, what you put together. And Lauren Folkerts and I were at one of your presentations at Columbine, and Tara was there on a different day as well. I didn't see her. So was so impressed by the work that you all had done. And so thanks for engaging in the civic process.
Can I, can I take a picture of you in the front row with the sign?
Got to get the kids in the picture, though. Okay, well.
I'm happy to take a picture of everyone, if you'd all like to get around the sign. I think other people are getting their cameras out, too, so let's be patient. It is wonderful to have kids here. Thank you so much for using your voices.
All right, yeah. Thanks so much. All right, we will now move to the over-eighteen portion of the public hearing. So adults only from here on out. And thank you, all the rest of you, for your graciousness and being patient while we let the young people speak. You're very generous. So everyone will have two minutes to speak. We have a number of people in person, then a couple online as well. So our first three speakers are Devon Riker, Arieta Roth, and Beryl Stafford.
Thank you, guys. We are the Rikers. We own a home on Edgewood Drive and have been in Boulder since the week of the 2013 flood. As I feared and expected, the positioning of our community's feedback regarding the proposed flood mitigation is being construed as a few disgruntled, ill-informed, and nimby homeowners. It's disheartening, because the pain, frustration, and sometimes frantic outbursts you witnessed these past weeks should have you reflecting on the why and not the who. The desperation is emblematic of a deeply flawed engagement process for which real lives and properties are at stake. I ask that you reflect on the criticality of your review. How much time have you each spent researching the proposal, not at face value, but critically, as you would do if it were your home, your investment, and your lives that simply needed to fall in line? While we love the corridor, flood mitigation is needed, but we all should take issue with this approach. During my career at ZAO, I managed commensurate infrastructure projects with some of the largest sports media companies in the world. I can confidently say this is not how you manage stakeholders. Specifically, when there's inequitable impact, financial impact, health and well-being impact, this is not how it's done. The inability to listen to questions from the community so that your answers may be thorough and honest, instead of contradicting your statements days later, this is not how it's done. The delayed release of the full proposal and supporting documentation leading up to this meeting to mitigate our effectiveness in being contributing members of this forum, this is not how it's done. Plainly, the community engagement efforts by the RAB Board and the related utilities were perfunctory at best and negligent at worst. This is not how it's done. I ask you not to question the need, we know the need. I ask you to question the how. Do you know explicitly what you're approving? We weren't the drain in 2013. For those who benefit, for whose benefit should we be the drain going forward? Thank you. Thank you, Devon.
Now Arieta Roth, Beryl Stafford, and Dennis Bashline.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Arieta Roth. I've been a resident of Edgewood Drive with my husband and dog since 2021. The backyard and natural surroundings were the reasons. We decided to put an offer on our home. Finding out we were in a flood and conveyance zone at closing made us take a considerable pause. In the fall of 2022, our home received a flyer that noted the city was reevaluating the flood zone. By going to the link provided, I saw some of the maps included in today's proposal. However, there was no indication that work would need to be done for this reclassification. I have not received any notices from the city since that flyer. I am here today due to the efforts of my neighbors to make sure our community was informed of a major project that would impact all of us. After reading through the materials currently available and meeting with Joanna Bloom's team, I support a budget approval to begin the engineering and design process for the greater flood mitigation project. I have concerns regarding Reach Six, as the work outlined in this plan would directly impact my property, the natural surroundings, and animal habitat of my neighborhood. In order to maintain my support for Upper Goose Creek Reach Six, an acceptable project plan would include: clear and timely communication of next steps to the property owners along Upper Goose Creek, an outline of assurances that property owners will be included and considered throughout the design process, retention of as many existing trees as possible, and addition of more trees and native plants for erosion control, limitation of any creek expansion to the south side of the creek instead of encroachment into the north side properties, to the extent possible, the use of natural design strategies to retain the banks of the creek. When natural design strategies are not possible, implementation of environmentally and aesthetically sensitive solutions, regular maintenance, trash cleanup, and tree care, regardless of project scope, and confirmation that increased pedestrian access will not be provided behind our homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Arieta. Beryl Stafford, Dennis Bashline, and Peggy Bashline.
Hi. My name is Beryl Stafford. I founded a company here in Boulder twenty years ago, Bobo's Outbars. I've lived in and have paid taxes in Boulder for over forty years. I came to CU and never left. I live on Goose Creek on Title Road. My backyard abuts the creek. I am asking City Council to vote no, or at least delay this vote on the flood mitigation plan. My biggest concern is the short amount of time in which my neighbors and I were informed of all of this, and that it is already up for vote after first hearing about it only a few weeks ago. I never received notice from the city. I was lucky that my neighbors put flyers around the neighborhood. We, whose lives will be severely impacted by ten years of disruptive construction at our homes, feel that the outreach from the city has been a huge failure, and that this has been, and that this has been shoved down our throats. My second concern is that the plan will completely destroy this unique wildlife ecosystem that exists in our downtown Pearl Street area. This little urban wild corridor is home to hundreds of cottonwoods, mountain lions, bear, minks, fox, deer, tons of species of birds, songbirds, and hawks. I believe this corridor is definitely worth saving. Your plan to bulldoze and concrete, all of this, seems irrational and rushed. I know there are alternatives to this widening of Upper Goose Creek. One that is frequently mentioned during our neighborhood meetings is the existing Floral Street option. I'm no engineer, but I urge you to spend the time considering this or other alternatives, as they are way less intrusive to Boulder residents, and will take a fraction of the money and time spent that the Upper Goose Creek mitigation would require. In your plan, on page three hundred, I quote, "One of the options is to delay." So I'm asking you to please consider this today. Thank you.
Thanks, Beryl. Dennis Bashline, Peggy Bashline, and Brian Bennett.
My name's Dennis Bashline, 2242 Edgewood Drive. I was going to read all this to you, but you're talking about two hundred trees that are going to get chopped down.
Come into the mic, please.
You're talking about two hundred trees that are going to get chopped down that are huge. They could live four hundred years. You're going to replace them with little twigs? Where's the owls, great-horde owls that nest there? They're not going to come back, Debbie. You guys need to really think about this. You know, one of the guys on TV, or on the TV here, said that he lives on Edgewood. His house is up for sale. He works for WRAP or whatever it is, the Water Board Consultants. You guys need to think about this. I beg you to say no and vote no.
Thanks, Dennis. We've got Peggy Bashline, then Brian Bennett, and Mimi Eto'o.
Peggy Bashline, 2242 Edgewood South. Against the mission to destroy our backyards and easements along the majestic wildlife corridor at Goose Creek, my, 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 the roller coaster of events put to this section of community. It's been the ride of our lives. I personally have never felt so much pain and so much despair, yet so much love and connection in one short span. These golden people, my neighbors and friends, actually share with conviction my undying love and respect for the towering cottonwoods, the wild-flowing grasses, and our fuzzy creek pals, who are for daily gifts to our souls and spirits. I was stunned, lost, and alone at the beginning of this wild ride. Who would have believed a small batch of simple folded papers donned with colorful ink and the sentiments of my plight would result in such a frenzy of support and solidarity? My dream tonight is to have my targeted, coveted section of Edgewood and Creek, deemed untouchable, protected, designated ecosystem for the coming generations. May they never endure the misery of all that was 1988 sea dump, or all that remains Reach Six today. I ask council, vote no. was 1988 sea dump or all that remains Reach Six today. I ask Council, vote no. The monstrous discrepancies dispersed as accurate between citizens and planning appear irreconcilable. To all who support what is goose, carry on, my wayward son. There'll be peace when you are done. Lay your weary head to rest. Don't you cry no more.
Thank you, Peggy. Now we have Brian Bennett, Mimi Ito, and Edward Clark.
Good evening. My name is Brian Bennett. I live at 1921 Tyler Road. I am not an engineer. I'm here tonight because I have concerns about the Upper Goose and Two Mile Canyon Creek flood mitigation plan, specifically about Reach Six. The plan aims to replace the wildlife corridor to help with flooding mitigation. However, destroying this active wildlife corridor will have long-term lasting negative effects on the corridor and the neighbors who live near it. This wildlife corridor is a vital part of our ecosystem. It provides a home for countless species of native plants and animals, including dozens of mature cottonwood trees that line the creek and over 100 varieties of birds. It helps to maintain the balance of nature, destroying at risk losing many of these species forever. Once the proposed construction is complete, we need to consider the impact of increased human traffic in the area, which could lead to further environmental damage. Moreover, we need to ask ourselves whether this is the best solution to the problem of flooding. Are there other options that would be less damaging to the environment and the neighborhood? I urge those involved in the decision-making process to carefully consider the environmental impact of the construction and find a solution that protects our community from flooding and ensures the preservation of our natural resources. We can find solutions that balance both safety and environmental conservation, but it will require collaboration and creative problem solving. In conclusion, I'm not an engineer, but there must be a better solution than widening the Upper Goose Creek between 19th Street and 24th Street. Let us work together to find a solution that addresses the concerns of all parties involved. I urge City Councils to either vote no or delay the vote until our concerns have been addressed. Thank you, Council members, for your time and attention.
Thank you, Brian. Now we have Mimi Ito, Edward Clark, and Candace Walworth.
Hello, I'm Mimi Ito, 2254 Edgewood Drive, and I join my neighbors along Edgewood in our concern for the proposed Goose Creek flood mitigation plan. You mentioned that there was a lot of community engagement, but most of us did not even hear about this till March or April, and we were able to get these T-shirts in just a few weeks. So we are disturbed by many aspects of this 10-plus-year plan. As you know, if it's 10 years, that really means 12 to 15, which will bring air pollution, noise pollution. It will disturb the sleep of many residents. It will disturb our pets and residents who work from home. It will destroy trees and other foliage. And as has been mentioned before, these won't come back in just a few years. And it will greatly disturb the wonderful wildlife we have back there. And some of the animals were mentioned by another one of my neighbors, but there are more than that. And it does not seem to be in keeping with Boulder's love of the environment and care for animals. I also note that we have been told contradictory statements about the plan, which is quite upsetting. The purported goal of this plan is to prevent more flooding, but my neighbors and I have actually had little to no problems with flooding on our street. And that includes my house, which has been in my family's ownership for 50-plus years. And I believe there are alternatives, as has been mentioned before. The Floral Street is one mainly mentioned, but I believe there are others. And so I ask you to please vote no on this plan, or at the very least delay. Thank you.
Thanks, Mimi. Edward Clark, Candace Walworth, and Brett Kennedy.
Before I start, I submitted a presentation. I hope you've all been able to review it. Hello, dear Council, I'm Eddie Clark, and I've lived at 2248 Edgewood Drive with my wife and dogs since 2010. We are strongly against this flood mitigation plan, but we also value increased flood mitigation. Less than, or our home did not flood in 2013. Less than 1% of the community was engaged and less than 0.5% involved in the values and input of this plan. The community engagement has been unsatisfactory and an inequitable representation nullifying the validity of this plan. Most of my neighbors were not even aware of it until a few weeks ago. Upper Goose Creek is an essential inner-city wildlife corridor, and its banks are lined with mature cottonwoods that provide vital carbon sequestration that removes over 10,000 pounds of CO2 from our city's air. That's over 500,000 pounds of CO2 from the atmosphere since our homes were built. This plan will replace the cottonwoods with concrete and will increase global warming and the intensity of storms this plan seeks to mitigate. At $12 million, $2020, nearly double or triple by implementation, widening Upper Goose Creek is the most costly alternative, and it provides the worst cost-to-benefit ratio. Utilizing far less expensive and disruptive alternatives such as the Two Mile-04A, which enlarges stormwater drains under iris and improving floral drive stormwater drains is better. Upper Goose Creek alternatives include detention ponds in North Boulder Park and Old Boulder Hospital site and underutilized community gardens. Additionally, improving and properly maintaining existing stormwater drains and systems is paramount. The plan's not acceptable. Please, I urge you, vote no and require thorough community engagement moving forward.
Okay. Thank you, Eddie. Now we have Candace Walworth, Brett Kennedy, and Bev Daniels.
Good evening. My name is Candace Walworth, and I'm here tonight because I believe we can address the flood mitigation needs in North Boulder and at the same time protect one of the few remaining wildlife corridors in the city. The current plan calls for extensive and invasive construction on Reach Six that would put the Goose Creek Wildlife Corridor in harm's way. We've been told that this plan has been well-vetted, yet my partner and I and many of our neighbors first learned about it in late March, not from the city, but from a neighbor. A public utilities project of this cost and consequence requires timely and proactive outreach and engagement with citizens. This has not been the case. Before a decision is made, all stakeholders need to understand the matrix of options. I recently discovered a report online authored by Icon Engineering dated in 2022. It describes Reach Two, which is near Linden Avenue, as being partially on private property. It states that restoration of the full 100-year capacity would be overly disruptive to the adjacent land and concludes that a design with less than 100-year capacity would, quote, "be a good compromise for this reach of the creek," end quote. Why not apply the same principles to Reach Six and seek a good compromise, one that aligns with the city's green space goals and environmental stewardship values? As citizens, we don't have a vote tonight, nor do our neighbors' children, who would lose beloved backyard play spaces essential to their health and wellbeing. I urge you, use the power of your vote to request additional conceptual design details, including an environmental impact report. Vote no on the plan as it now stands. Proof of concept requires that the City Council and homeowners understand the nitty-gritty impacts this project would have. While we can still make a difference, options do exist. Let's get them on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Candace. We've got Brett Kennedy and Bev Daniels, and then we'll go to our
Good evening. As a resident of Edgewood Drive...
If you can speak into the mic, please. Sorry.
As a resident of Edgewood Drive, whose home backs up to Goose Creek, I understand and agree that flood mitigation is necessary. Yet I'm concerned about the negative impact that this will have on wildlife and the effects on the deer, bear, fox, hawks, owls, and mountain lions and countless other species making their homes in the corridor. As Boulder continues to expand in its development and growth, this unique swatch of land and home for wildlife warrants consideration and protection. It's not clear to me from the flood mitigation proposal what has been assessed and determined relative to preserving the wildlife, especially during an extended period of construction. The width of the creek behind my home is five feet across, and it's my understanding the current plan is to expand it to 30, which will necessitate the countless removal of trees and excavation of the natural landscape, which held its own during the 2013 flooding and where my home remained dry. As many people may not be aware, living in a designated flood zone impacts what you can do with your own property. Permits are three times more expensive, and you're limited in what you can do with renovations and home improvements, and I'm required to maintain a costly flood insurance policy that goes up every year. So with all those challenges, you would think I would hold no objections for flood mitigation, as it may protect my home from a significant water event, but it also provides me a lot more freedom and less expenses as a homeowner. Don't get me wrong, I certainly appreciate that, but not at the expense of an ecosystem. Improving the corridor while protecting and minimizing the alteration of the natural landscape and wildlife refuge can be achieved and should be prioritized through collaboration, not only with the contractors and engineers providing additional assessments, plans, and designs, but active engagement from the residents. There was very little outreach or engagement from the city with those of us most impacted by this project and whose yards and quality of life will most be affected. So please vote no today and request additional conceptual design details for consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Brett. Bev Daniels?
Hello. I'm Bev Daniels. I live on Tyler Road. Boulder's city prides itself on communication, engagement, and transparency with the community. Unfortunately, that's not apparent at all during this process. How can the City Council vote so soon on this proposal when the people most affected received so little communication and outreach from the city, when their voices have not been heard and alternatives considered? Reach Six plan has such a far-reaching negative impact on this community. Most of us weren't even aware of the plan until last month, and that was from some neighbors, not the city. It shows a complete disregard for the community and its concerns. Why weren't the members of the community a long time ago told of the likely outcomes of this plan, that they're going to lose sections of their property, that their lives are going to be upended by major construction work in their backyards, and I mean in their backyards, that over 100 cottonwood trees will be removed, and that due to extensive construction, animals and birds will no longer live and move through an undeveloped wild animal corridor, countless foxes, deer, bobcats, and even bears and mountain lions. The community deserves better than this. It should have had time to fully evaluate the plan, to understand the basis of the conclusions, and consider alternatives. There are alternatives to this plan, which will not result in such drastic outcomes. I urge the City Council to vote no. At the very least, I ask you to delay the vote, to give the community and the city the opportunity for meaningful engagement and consideration of the alternatives. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Bev. I'm going to go to our two remote speakers now. They are Lynn Siegel and Nancy Trigg. So Lynn, you're up.
Lynn, your mic is open. You'll just need to unmute.
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. Thanks, Brian. Yeah. I want you to take the 30,000-foot perspective here. You know, before he died, Gilbert White told me, took me aside and said, you know, the problem is people building on the floodplains. It's not the floodplains themselves. They're a natural phenomenon. And, you know, you look at those 1938 pictures, that was 85 years ago. Can you imagine what this place is going to look like in the year 2108, which is another 85 years from now? Because at the rate that this place is growing and that you're developing and you're, you know, you're having to deal with these things after the fact, not before the fact. You know, digging big culvers and changing ecosystems should not be an afterthought. And it is an afterthought. It absolutely is. The way builders, the way Boulder is building up its landscape, these 300-foot square foot places on Pearl Street, and every single corner I see, there's more and more development. It's the built environment that's a problem, not the flooding. So I say, of course, no. I mean, look at the reception you've gotten tonight at City Council, at the open comment, and at public hearing. Is anyone saying anything positive? Where's the engagement, you know? I don't know. I live on the hill, so I'm not even involved in this. But you know what? I am. Because my dad came to this town in about '53, and that's, you know, my attachment to this place is longstanding, and this process needs to be different. You need to think in the aerial perspective.
Your time's up, Lynn, but thank you for your testimony.
If you want to cut...
Thanks, Lynn. Our last speaker is Nancy Trigg.
Hi, I'm Nancy Trigg, speaking on Upper Goose Creek Reach Six. When people buy a home, they make a decision to accept some risks. The residents along Edgewood understood this and chose to purchase these small homes with a beautiful natural wildlife corridor and accept some flood risks that came along with it. Now the residents of Edgewood are being told that we need to give up our piece and much of our property for risk mitigation. These residents here today love their homes and way of life, most of whom have lived on this street for decades. We understand and appreciate that citywide flood mitigation is necessary and support plans to ensure the safety of people and properties, and we also want to protect the wildlife corridor and the peace of our daily lives. Two things can be true at the same time. There must be alternatives that could merge these two interests in Goose Creek Reach Six. Some city staff continually state that there are not alternatives to Goose Creek Reach Six, but there are significant options to reduce its impact. Detention in North Boulder Park and the city-owned property across the street is an option. New under-roadway stormpipe system is an option. Not diverting Two Mile Creek to Goose Creek at 19th is an option. Narrow channel improvements and maintenance is an option. What I'm asking the Council for tonight is more reasonable, community-inclusive approach with shared impact, equal community voice, and a willingness to build under-city-owned roadways and spaces for mitigation instead of using personal property and wildlife corridors. We ask that you vote no on the flood mitigation plan as it stands now and instead call for increased and rigorous community engagement which directly impact residents, particularly among Goose Creek Reach Six, and seek alternatives and specific design details from the mitigation team, including an environmental impact report for consideration at a later date. If you vote to move this project forward, there is no further City Council involvement through the design and construction phases. We fear that assurances made now will potentially collapse once approval is given. Any number of changes or additions to the project scope may occur during the next phase, as they have continued to do up until this presentation was once again updated last week, and homeowners will have no recourse to help them. Please vote no on the plan at this phase and insist on more alternative design studies and details with real company, community input. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, that brings to close our public hearing. Thanks, everyone who came and spoke to us tonight. Appreciate your input. So I'm going to bring it back to Council, and I'll just start to see if we have any follow-up questions based on the public testimony, and then we'll go to deliberations. I've got Bob and then Nicole.
Thanks, everyone who came out. Joe, I guess this is a question for you. It feels to me, listening to your presentation, listening to some of the testimony tonight, that we have a little bit of a chicken-rigged situation because it sounds like you're coming to us and asking us for the green light to move on to... coming to us and asking us for the green light to move on to the design phase, and I hear from frustration from the community that they don't know what the design is. And so I'm not sure how to resolve that. Can you lay out for us your proposed timeline? Like, what do you, if you got a green light on moving forward to design tonight, what would be your timeline for each of these phases? And do you, and what's the timeline for the community engagement along the way? And to that last speaker's point, is there plans to bring this back to council from time to time, check-ins?
Sure. Thank you for that. One clarification I wanted to make, can you hear me? I feel like, okay. I feel like it might not be working. A couple of the speakers mentioned, referred to the Water Resources Advisory Board, and I meant to say something in my introductory remarks. It's been, the plan that we're presenting tonight has been represented as a RAB-authored plan by some people. And just for, I know the council members know this, but for the community's benefit, the RAB's a volunteer board, and this is really a staff and consultant-developed plan. And the board certainly looks at it to see if we follow a good process and if we've missed anything major, but they're not getting into the nitty-gritty of checking our calculations and that kind of thing. So I wanted to make that clarification. In terms of the process, so if this moves into the design phase, we would then have a concept that we would start to develop the design details. And as I, I think I mentioned earlier, Brandon, I'll give you the opportunity to clarify anything that I get wrong. I'll just speak from, in general. Normally, a project of this scale, or the projects that come out of this plan and the scale of them, it can be a year, year and a half, two years of design. And working with the community on the property impacts and things like that, negotiating easements, before we would be in a position to go to construction. And certainly, council could ask us, as I mentioned before, at any time to come and give you an update, given the concerns that you've heard here tonight, and see if we've addressed them satisfactorily. So in general, I would say a year or two of design. I think the construction work, if I'm remembering the CIP correctly, would potentially start in 2026. So that's the timeframe that we're looking at. And Brandon, who's closer to the project team and the details, may wanna elaborate on that.
Yeah, I think you got most of it, Joe. But yes, we would start immediately on the concept design phase, and it does include an element of community engagement. So a good example right now is Gregory Canyon Creek. So we're sharing designs as we develop them through the webpage, meeting with community members that would be impacted. And yes, we'd be happy to come back to council and give updates as we go.
Just one other question, which is kind of unrelated. You guys may not know the answer to this, but one of the speakers referred to flood insurance, and I realize that people that are in certain FEMA flood designated areas pay an insurance premium, or an extra insurance amount because of that. Do you have any idea? I know you showed, you flashed up some numbers about how many houses would be taken out of different flood risk. And I know you guys aren't insurance experts, so you may not be able to answer this question, but do you have any idea how many of those homes would be relieved of that flood insurance requirement, based upon what you know?
Yes, so all those 527 homes would be removed from the special hazard flood zone. So I just wanna clarify, that doesn't mean there's no flood risk. It is just a line on the map. So FEMA does have a new flood insurance system, so it is a risk-based approach. It's called Risk 2.0. So that actually generates flood insurance rates for any home based on potential flooding risk. So we would remove all of them from the special hazard flood zone that we've identified.
Great. Thanks, Brandon. That's it.
Nicole, then Mark, you got one?
Thanks. Just a couple of follow-up questions. And thanks, Bob. You actually knocked one off of the list, so not gonna ask about the timeline. One of the things that I heard in the comment, and thank you to everybody who showed up and stayed late with us to comment, was around the accumulation of trash and, you know, other things. And I'm wondering if you could just speak a little bit to that of, you know, the work that's done to make sure that these areas stay clear of trash, because I imagine that impacts their effectiveness, too.
Yeah, so I don't remember the, I may have missed that comment from the speaker, but in general, in the master plan that we looked at last year with council, one of the six themes was increased maintenance. And we heard that from the community. That was already on our staff team's radar, that we needed to do enhancements. And we're bringing forward a budget proposal this year to add staff to our maintenance team. And so we're looking at that and want to improve the rate that we cycle through the system and do maintenance. So I don't know if that answers your question, and Brandon may have heard it and can speak to it.
Sure. I didn't hear the exact public comment that you're referring to, but we have maintenance crews. A difficult issue about this Goose Creek Reach Six behind Edgewood is we don't have consistent easements currently as a city. So we have helped some of the neighbors do maintenance in their backyard where we do have easements, and that's debris removal, trash cleanup. That doesn't significantly increase the capacity, just that routine maintenance, but it does help remove debris blockages and things like that. So we did see a lot of debris come down, even recently this weekend with the rain that we've received. So we do our best in the areas that we do have access to. It's very difficult. So one of the trees that fell down in a neighbor's backyard along this reach, we had no way to access it from either side, so we actually had to crane it over power lines from the Edgewood Street. So it just speaks to the importance of having that consistent, continuous system.
Thank you, Aaron. A persistent theme of the comments tonight has been the lack of community engagement. Joe, could you speak to that? Because I think there's a difference between engagement prior to moving forward and engagement in the context of, we've already decided on our path, now let's engage with the community to see how we can make it, you know, perhaps a little better at the margins. In looking at the staff memo, it appears that there've been four opportunities for engagement since January of 2021, which garnered less than a hundred responses in total. So I'm trying to understand how we can represent that we have had robust community engagement to this point, and I'm wondering if you could speak to that.
Sure. So up to this point, in terms of the community engagement, I believe the staff memo had a table that summarized all the different versions of engagement that there have been over the years. I will acknowledge that for this particular project or plan, get those words mixed up, the, for this particular plan, we had the COVID situation in the middle of it, which definitely had an impact on our ability to do engagement and how we could do it. That impacted projects and plans across the city, so that's definitely a factor. From, and for me, my role changed in the middle of all of this. And so I'm looking at what's been done historically, and as I'm talking to the staff team to bring this forward, and wanting to vet it and make sure it's ready, I'm looking at it and seeing how it compares to other things that we've done, and it seems like a similar level of engagement. And while the numbers of respondents to surveys or participation in events can seem really low, that's honestly fairly typical for utilities projects. We, as much as we try, we don't generate a lot of interest in the work that we do. And sometimes we get to a point like this in the project or a plan, and there becomes interest like we've had tonight. So I understand the concerns of the community, and I know in my own household, you get things in the mail, and you get information, and you pass it aside, so it's easy to miss. But I believe the team has provided opportunity, and there have been door hangers and letters and things like that, but those things can be easy to miss as well. I think part of, the initial part of your question also goes to what comes next. And there absolutely would be an opportunity to work with not just the Reach Six community members, but everybody that would be involved in the projects that come out of this plan, to work with property owners and make sure, as we develop the more detailed design, that we're addressing the concerns to the extent we can. And really, all of this boils down to a value judgment. And often, for these flood projects, there are competing interests and really important competing values. And it's not possible to have a perfect solution that addresses all of them, but we do our best to find a reasonable compromise and really do want to partner with the community to do that. So that would be our intention going forward.
Joe, you know, I read the same table that was included in the memo, and the bulk of the community engagement responses occurred around 2017 and 18. So I am suggesting that the hundred responses we've gotten in the last couple of years doesn't really represent a very robust engagement. I sympathize with the difficulties of doing so, A, because of the intrinsic lack of sexiness of talking about utilities projects, but I'd be very from, I really don't want to place the onus of lack of engagement on the community and saying, you guys didn't, you know, you guys didn't step up when we gave you an opportunity to. I think it's kind of our job to be sufficiently aggressive in providing engagement so that we get them engaged, and so that we don't have situations like tonight where everybody's coming before us and saying, I heard about this, you know, three weeks ago, four weeks ago. That, to me, is not a very good situation for us to be in. And to me, it doesn't represent the kind of engagement I would really like to see. And when you work with the community, assuming we authorize this tonight, when you work with the community, does that entail the possibility of changing the actual design? Or are we just talking about, I'll, you know, I'll move this over two feet, this over two feet, I'll leave this tree, and I'm gonna cut that tree instead? Does it get to anything more fundamental, such as a substantial alteration to the Reach Six program, if that should be what people are desirous of?
Yeah, so...
What does it mean to engage with the community at post-approval?
I understand, and I think some of the feedback we're getting tonight is placed in a way as if we were at the final design stage now. And I do appreciate that and accept the challenge to do better going forward. But in this mitigation plan, as we mentioned several times tonight, we're looking at over thirty different alternatives in a large-scale area, and trying to narrow that down based on technical feasibility and the general level of community engagement that we do for this stage of a plan and a project. And so in terms of how engagement will impact the design going forward, taking Reach Six, for example, that's adjacent to Edgewood, is there a likelihood that that will get moved to Glenwood or Iris, a street further to the north? That's highly unlikely. But the types of other modifications that you mentioned, like, can this tree be saved, or can you move something two feet this way or that way? Those are the types of discussions that we've generally had, like on the examples I gave of the main sewer projects and others like this that we have done. And we've been able to work with the property owners to find a compromise. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, but those are my thoughts.
No, I was really asking you, could you, could those changes, or those conversations result in substantive changes to the design for Reach Six? Not necessarily moving into a different street, but narrowing the canal, going to a fifty-year standard as opposed to a hundred-year standard. I'm just trying to understand what this further community engagement will look like if we're moving forward with this tonight. And it seems to me that we're kind of nibbling at the margins once we give you the go-ahead to do this.
I would say that's somewhat true. Some of the public comment mentioned that a hundred trees would be removed, or a number of trees. From my discussions with Brandon and the team, I don't know that we're at a stage yet where we know that, for example. So the specifics of the design and what the channel exactly would look like, and there are options on how to make it wider or narrower, I think, Brandon, correct me if I'm wrong, those types of things are all on the table. So I think there's, there still is an opportunity for some substantive changes to happen.
But if I might jump in, I think we, if we approve the plan as recommended, we are approving what's in the plan. So like, Mark, you used the example of fifty versus a hundred year. Well, the plan says a hundred years, so we're approving the plan, we'd be approving the plan that says a hundred years. So it would have to be within the confines of that plan. If you made major alterations to what's in the plan, I assume you'd have to come back.
That's exactly what I was asking.
Yeah.
That's correct. And we have, I have asked the team about different levels of flood protection, and could that minimize construction impacts? I think that particular set of options won't make substantive changes, but channel design and the way we go about it, there still are some options.
Mark, you got anything else?
That's all for me. Thank you.
I got one, then I got Tara and Rachel. So one of the people speaking mentioned ten years of construction. And if you can just clarify, on a per-reach basis, like when you're doing one, one reach, about how long would construction take within, I mean, Reach Six is obviously the one of concern for tonight, so we use that one. About how long might it take from beginning to end of construction?
Right. We typically see these projects for the length of reach we're talking about, for Reach Six specifically, take anywhere from eight months to a year of construction activities.
Okay. Thanks for that. So just want to clarify, we're not looking at ten years of construction in any one area. Tara, then Rachel?
You go first.
Then Lauren.
One of the community members mentioned, in their backyard, it would go from, the creek or the channel would go from five feet to thirty feet. Does that sound right? And is that what it's gonna look like all along, that in people's backyards, the increase from five to thirty feet?
Yeah. So there are definitely some narrow reaches back there, and I think that creates a very difficult engineering challenge. So we do recognize that, and it's a matter of where that additional conveyance capacity would come from. So that's where we'd actually have to see where that channel location would make the most sense, and also working with the property owners who would be impacted by that channel alignment. So it would increase pretty significantly from what it is currently today, and that's really due to the need for the conveyance. And it's a matter of what we do with that additional corridor that it's really important we talk about.
Okay. So obviously, we've heard a lot about, you know, some people receive no notice or minimum note, minimal notice. I would say, like, I always got notice from the city when my house has been impacted, so I'm wondering, did we brick, or what are we gonna do differently going forward to make sure that impacted community members get notice?
You asked, did we, I didn't hear the word.
I said bricked, but it's not like my finest word choice ever.
Do you want to clarify?
Did we, did we fumble? Did we do something different? Did we not give notice?
My impression is that is not the case, and definitely don't want to put the team on the spot here tonight. I believe we use the traditional tools to let people know. As I said, in my own experience, it's easy to miss things, so we'll definitely review that as a team. And if we did, if we did have a miss or do less than we should have, we will let people know, and we will do better in the future.
And maybe what can people expect in terms of notice going forward, if there's a step in the process that people might want to engage on, or something happening at a decision point, or something they could weigh in on?
Yeah, for, well, for this, for Reach Number Six, I think it was mentioned that Joanna kind of led some walking tours in the last couple of weeks that Brandon was part of. And I know we have an email list for this group of community members. And so for the people who are really interested, the, just the direct communication from us would typically happen in the next phase. So if the concept plan is approved tonight, we will know generally what the routes are and... and, and be talking directly to people going forward.
And will all five hundred or seven hundred households get mailed notice of, of this going forward? And like, they'll be, in addition to, you can sign onto an email, they'll, you'll get notice?
So typically, if we move forward with the plan tonight, we would outreach to the people that would be directly impacted by construction in the next phase. So currently, that would be scheduled to be this Goose Creek Reach Six section. So that would be the community and neighborhood we would be working most directly with through the design phase, because we wouldn't design each of the improvements all at once. We would do it kind of in that order based on the prioritization criteria and when we have the available budget. And I do just want to mention, it, it's been a long engagement period. And we are engineers, so we are doing our best, and we do have consultants that help us with that. But we've really identified this as a need within the utility, and we're actively hiring a, a communications position just to support our utility wholly. I think we have a, a different challenge where we do have a lot of impacts to people's properties, a lot of above-grade utility. So it's really important that we do do our best job to engage people, make sure they know what's going on. And this has been a long run, and we, we recognize that as a need for the utility as well.
And that was a, a good segue maybe into my next question. You said like you would, you would do engagement with impacted community members, and then you sort of got an answer. My question is, what is an impacted community member? Because I was pretty impacted on another flood mitigation project, but I was not an adjacent neighbor. So how will those folks get reached out to? Kind of attached to my, you know, five hundred homes question as well.
Yeah, I guess I, I can speak to, we do have an email listserv that anybody can sign up for. So when things change or things are going on, you, like the meeting tonight, we do send out email notifications about milestones in the project, upcoming engagement, opportunities to reach us. We have contact information on the webpage. We also have project information on the webpage. And then typically with these processes, we'll start off the design with a community meeting just to let everybody know what's going on, let them know how best to engage, where they can find designs, what we're thinking for that process. So that's typically how we normally run these projects within the utility.
One of the Columbine students who called himself an earth guardian talked about people who live in, who live in trailers being hit hardest. And so I, I guess I just want to understand, like, how will they hear about it? Because they're not going to look at the website, they're not going to probably have, a lot of people will not have watched this meeting. And so, you know, want to make sure that the folks here are getting the emails and also other people are getting the emails. And I'm, I'm not clear on how, or notice on how we're going to make sure that we've shored that up for this.
Yeah, so I think one of the things that we learned during the master plan process, when we did some of that outreach and we used our community connectors, was that there were people who were being left out and, and groups of community members who were being left out of our outreach. And so whether it's this project, plan, or the projects that come from it, or, or just our CIP in general, I think taking what we learned in that master plan process and making sure that we're doing the outreach in a more comprehensive and equitable way would be our intention going forward. And using the resources of the city to, to help us reach all parts of the community.
So community and connectors will definitely get engaged? Cool. Next question, we heard, I heard a couple of people talk about Floral Street option and should have considered that? Is that off the table if we vote yes tonight?
No, it's, it's...
Oh, Aaron already asked it, sorry. I guess I didn't hear it.
Still an option, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't re, result in no need to make channel improvements and reach Number Six. It would reduce what's needed there, but there still would be impacts.
If, if we had done engagement differently and, and perhaps more to people's liking, would, would engineering options have changed? Could, might we have something different on the table had we done different outreach?
It's a fair question. And, and for a plan like this, it might be a situation where we look at thirty alternatives, and maybe there are three of them that look like they're pretty feasible, and we don't have a strong feeling between them. That's really not the case here. As I've talked about it and looked it over myself with the project team, it really boils down to one alternative and, and the concept that we're bringing forward. And unfortunately, the area that's of the most concern, the topography of the region and just where the natural creek and where the water wants to flow, Reach, we can't avoid Reach Six if we do enhanced flood protection.
Okay, thanks.
And, and it was, some of the comments, there's a perception that that's not the case, but as I've reviewed this plan, I don't see that.
Last question. When you, when you go in to do the widening, is there a way to, you know, do it in, in pieces within the different reaches that are, you know, allowing, you know, maybe some of the equipment to get in or, or something differently that you can start trees regrowing quicker? Because I, I hear a lot of concern about the trees. I, I've looked at cottonwood trees for my own yard and been advised against them because they grow so fast, like they're, they're five feet a year or something like that. So those could, in theory, like in two years, if you can get something in and, I don't know, change equipment, you could have trees regrowing before the project's even completed. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And, and several rolls ago at the city, I used to do some of this project management work myself. And I do know that there are techniques that can be used to stage construction and do different things to minimize im, impacts. And so I'm, I'm sure the techniques have evolved, and Brandon and the team that's doing the work now could probably run circles around the twenty, Joe, twenty years ago. But certainly, we would be looking at those types of things where there is a, a really important environmental feature that we want to save.
Okay, thanks.
Lauren, and then maybe we can move to deliberations.
Thank you. Sort of early in your presentation, you mentioned having to meet a lot of federal requirements because of wetlands and things like that. So what kind of environmental impact studies would have to be done as this moves forward?
So number one is wetlands mapping. There's also migratory bird act, and there's ecological surveys you have to do in advance. So some of the species that have been mentioned tonight, we would need to look for those prior to any construction and also make sure there's no nesting and things like that. So it, it all falls under the Army Corps of Engineers, and they consult with the other federal regulatory agencies. But if you do find species of concern, they'll typically give you mitigation criteria. So I always use, there's Preblemeadow's jumping mouse is a pretty common threatened species in the county. And there's specific types of construction activities you do in specific type, times of the year to mitigate your impacts to species like that. So depending on what the species is, they can give you those recommendations.
But generally speaking, we, we will be doing a number of, sort of looking at environmental impacts and impacts on, specifically on protected species and things like that as...
Yeah, so we won't, we won't, more than likely, we won't have to do a formal environmental impact statement, but we will need to consult with the Army Corps of Engineers, which they will dictate how deep of detail we need to go into for those documents.
Thank you. Kind of following up on Rachel's questions around notification, and you mentioned notifying people who would be affected by construction, but could we send the mailer out to people who are in the flood, you know, in the hundred-year flood zone for that section? Okay, and that's part of it. And then, you know, specifically as we look at the Section Six, or I'm sorry, Reach Six, I know for the South Boulder Creek flood mitigation, we had like sort of a twenty-five percent check-in on the design and then like a seventy-five percent. Is that, could we do that similar kind of a thing? And would there be A, B, or C options at those stages? Or would there be other stages that you might recommend a check-in at?
We, we could certainly do updates at different levels of design. South Boulder Creek is, is a little bit different situation because of CU South and the annexation and, and, and there's just a whole comprehensive set of stuff there that's way deeper. So for Reach Number Six, I, I don't know that we would have as many options as something as comprehensive as the whole South Boulder Creek and CU South situation, but we could certainly do design check-ins or that kind of thing whenever council wanted, at whatever levels.
It just seems like with this, you know, I can see that this is a challenging section with sort of the steep hillside, and I believe, having done some work in those areas, that that hillside soil tends to be fairly unstable. Being right up against lots that aren't particularly deep where mitigation or widening of the creek is going to have a larger impact. So like the loca, the, the precise location of that channel will have a big impact on the people involved, and there might be different things that we're weighing back and forth with exactly where that channel gets located. And if there are options, I think it might be worth bringing that back to council.
All right. Thanks, Lauren. So let's deliberate. Who would like to kick off the discussion? Don't be shy, folks. Matt.
Need to find that unmute button, didn't I? Appreciate that. And thanks for, yeah, just thanks for the feedback that we've gotten from the community and appreciate the presentation on this. Well, you know, interesting theme is this sort of having it both ways, in a good way, right? Which is, can we have proper flood protection while at the same time maintaining sort of quality wildlife environments? And yes, and. And I think that's exactly what we should do. And I think it's within the context that, you know, we are choosing just a concept here from which we will further define the details around it. And, you know, this isn't really an interpretive or subjective exercise. This is objective, and it's really predicated on sound engineering. And I think, you know, we have to get to a place where we can trust our team to eliminate the least viable options so that we have some, some sound basis from which to work from. And, and I certainly understand the concerns of the community members and of the outreach. But there's, but when we're dealing with sound engineering issues, that, that we have to sort of start from that basis from which to then gain input. Because if we're sort of engineering by, by community, I think we get into a real tough place in terms of how we actually get to a desirable outcome. And so I think there has to always be some pre-engineering that has to go to vetting these viable options and get to a better place. And I, I feel confident that our team can meet those needs of the community while also meeting the long-term goals of our flood protection. And I just want to go back to the three students we had, right? You know, Ren, Gavin, and Anno. I mean, they did a master class on linking public comments thematically between themselves and told us about the future generations and the impacts that climate change will have in making these flood events more severe. And I think we have to build that resilient community. And that impacts all of us in the now. But there has to, I hope there's comfort in knowing that that'll build more resiliency going forward. And, and so I would just ask of staff that as we embark, we really work closely with these neighbors and do what we do in a community that values the environment, which is lever, leverage those natural landscapes as we deal with defining that detail in the project going forward.
Thanks, Matt. Well said. Nicole?
Yeah, thanks. And thanks, thanks, Matt, for your comments. Thanks, thanks to everybody involved, especially those of you who came out tonight and who've been kind of talking with us over the last few weeks. This discussion to me really seems to be at the leading edge of a lot of hard discussions that our community is going to be having in the coming years as the climate crisis worsens. We're at such high risk for flooding, and we can't make the floodwater go elsewhere. So what we can do is try to help it pass through our community in the least destructive way possible. And I'll vote yes with that goal in mind. And I know that's not what all of you edgeworders in the audience really wanted to hear. As staff mentioned, this project is just about to move into the design phase, which means that it's still a concept that hasn't been fully detailed and designed. There will be a lot of opportunity for engagement on the design, including some one-on-one discussions with affected property owners and staff. And I don't say that as someone who just sits up here and makes decisions that impact other people in the community. I live right by CU South, and like you, I had not heard much about what was going on prior to the nitty-gritty design details starting to come up. My neighborhood also had to wrestle with these competing values of safety for people outside our neighborhood and joy in our own neighborhood. But once the concept was in place, we had a lot of discussions around the design of that site before it was finalized. And because of those discussions, the final design did change in ways that significantly benefited our community. They took our concerns into consideration and tried to help us maintain some of that joy that we were looking for in that area. I know it won't be the same as it is now, but I really hope that you will partner with us and with staff. Staff, I hope you'll continue to partner with the community, especially more as we get into this design stage. And hopefully, the end result will create another magical space that you and future residents can enjoy. And while it won't feel good for a while, I know this, it doesn't feel good to those of us living next to CU South either. Hopefully in time, it will be even more magical, knowing that you can enjoy the area while many others outside of your neighborhood are safe. And just for, for us to think about for moving forward, since this is not, not going to be the first hard discussion we're going to have like this, I'd really love for future councils to get some feedback. What's going well? What isn't going well? As you mentioned, Joe, so that we know where there are ways that we can improve. We're all learning together at the moment. And because we have many more decisions like this coming, it really does seem valuable to know how we can improve and what we should keep doing. And as we do more of this work, I hope we can get better and better at the sort of compassionate partnership that I've seen from your team with neighborhoods, so we can keep more of us safe while helping people continue to enjoy their homes. Thanks.
Thanks, Nicole. I, I got Mark, and then maybe I'll call in myself. And, and then Tara, and we'll see if we can move us forward. Good, Mark?
Yeah. I want to start with a couple of premises. Obviously, flood mitigation is required. I don't think there's any significant dispute over that. We can have conversations about the extent of it, but it is required. Something has to happen. But to use Rachel's term, I, I do think we bricked our community engagement responsibilities in this case. And committing to the community that we will talk to you after we've made the decision as to how to proceed is sort of in the verdict-first, then the trial category of, of operation. I would love to support this as is. I actually have quite a bit of faith that Joe and his team have come up with the, what I think will be the best possible solution. But I think it's our responsibility to take that argument to the community before we make that decision. And despite the, the difficulties in conducting public engagement or getting people's attention, that's our job. And not doing that and, and simply saying, well, you know, we'll have good conversations with you afterwards, really doesn't make the grade for me. So I think, first of all, that, that we should be re-engaging with the community and having this discussion frankly before we make this decision. And, and if obviously, as I receive the will of council, we're going to make a decision tonight, I'm going to be a reluctant voter against on those grounds, not because I'm against the, the flood mitigation or even potentially this concept for providing flood mitigation. But I don't think we've taken the proper steps with the community. And if we don't think of a, a public engagement as, as just some sort of show that we put on, we need to take it seriously. We need to conduct it seriously, and we need to do a much better job than we did in this case. And so if, if we are simply going to be forced to move forward this evening with a yes or no vote, having very little to do with the merits of the proposal, I'm going to vote no.
Thanks, Mark. All right, I'm going to call in myself. I appreciate the comments of my colleagues. And this is, it's a tough situation. There's, there's no question about it. To the folks who are here tonight, I appreciate your testimony. And this is about trade-offs, right? In terms of, we need flood mitigation like this in our community. We know that we're at the highest flood risk in, in the state of Colorado, and the floods are only getting it worse as time goes on. And so projects like this are required in order to make us the resilient community that will thrive in the future. But there will be short-term impacts that are going to be painful, and that's... But there will be short-term impacts that are going to be painful, and that's not avoidable, but it is mitigatable. And so I think we need to move this forward, but to do so in the most collaborative way possible that does minimize the negative impacts to the current creek as possible. So to that point, I would like to say that hopefully we can do the floral drive alternative. So I'd like to give some pretty clear direction hopefully from council. Because I heard from you that it's probably technically doable. And so I'm hoping that a motion tonight could include direction to pursue that approach. Because while changes to reach six will still be necessary, I think they would be somewhat lessened, right? So there would be the need to move less water through that area, and so therefore I think the impacts to that area would be lesser. And a couple of updates to council, I think, would be helpful so we can keep an eye on the process as well. But I wanted to call out the testimony of Arietta Roth from before. I think Ms. Roth has left the meeting. But she had some excellent points that I think were already headed in this direction, but I wanted to call them out because I thought they were really well put. I will say there was something about where the bank impact should be that I didn't quite follow, but I'll, the rest of them, I'm going to mention these, which were about clear and timely notification to neighbors about changes to include residents in the design process going forward, to retain as many trees as possible, to plant more trees than there were before, to utilize natural design strategies, to not allow generalized public access and to do regular maintenance along that reach. And I thought those were great suggestions, and I think generally the direction we're headed, so I think Ms. Roth for that constructive engagement, and hopefully we can move forward. And I got Tara, Bob, Rachel.
Did you want to go, did you want to call a queen or something, Bob?
It does, fine.
So one of the, we, I know that I read the letters, and so there was a lot of them. So I apologize if I couldn't write back to every single person. But I did want to wait to hear what everybody had to say. One of the letters said, if this happened to you, you wouldn't want it. I don't know if that person is here. But I do know that I have a small backyard, and my backyard sits on, which one is it, Joe? The Blue Bell? My next-door neighbors flooded during the 2013. We did not flood until they, of course, pushed their water into our backyard, and then we did flood. But that's a whole nother story. So if I lost from right now, let's say the creek is five feet wide, if it went to 30 feet, that would probably be half my backyard. And there's a lot of cottonwoods there, of course. So I totally understand what you're saying. So, but I also know we need flood mitigation. We just do need it. So what I'm going to ask is even an extra foot or two when you're, is meaningful when you're losing a lot of your backyard. So every single thing I'm going to ask that you can do to save as much as possible, even if it means going slower, I think would be worth it. So I'm going to ask if you could, if you need to slow down the design and take your time to figure out a way for people to lose less of their backyard, then I think that it would be worth it, and that's what I have to say.
Thanks.
First of all, I'll talk about the substance. I agree with what my colleagues have said as far as how to use the natural design. Now, you guys were already planning to do that, and I've seen, like Ginny, I served in the Mile High Flood District Board for a year, and I've seen a lot of projects up and down the Front Range where that's really been first and foremost, that while there's, and sometimes a need to disrupt the environment or disrupt the channel to do that in such a way that it gets back to the natural state as quickly as possible, and I know you guys were already thinking about that. I agree with Aaron that the floral drive option sounds like it's better, and if you guys are relatively agnostic about that and it has fewer impacts on reach six, then that's certainly something we should pursue. I agree with your offer of maybe checking in with us and with the community on a more formal basis at times you think are appropriate. I do want to reflect a little bit on this community engagement question, because this seems to be one of the big issues. You know, it breaks my heart, and this has happened so many times on so many different projects, nothing to do with even necessarily public works. We have so many different things that we, as a city, are needing to do for the community good. And a group of people come forward and say, well, hold on a second here. I just found out about this, you know, last month, last week, yesterday, and I found out from a neighbor, not from the city. And I know on the other side of the coin, the city staff tries so hard on community engagement. Open houses are held and notices are sent out and websites are set up and everything that the staff can think of, you know, social media and so on and so forth. And so I don't want to lay blame on any one side or the other, because I know the staff tries really, 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 really hard on each one of these community impacting projects to reach as many community members as possible, and then we have community members that say, I never heard. And they're both right, right? Some community members just simply didn't hear, and staff did try. And I like to think that each one of these situations where we have that tension, we have some tonight, we learn from that process and we get better. Again, not to be critical of staff, but I hope we learned some things from this that would cause us to figure out how on the next project, the next project, and quite frankly, even later on in this project, since we still have a lot of community engagement ahead of us, that we figure out better ways to engage with the community. People have busy lives, and sometimes they don't always are aware of what's going on. And conversely, sometimes we just miss. As Rachel said, we brick it. Sometimes we just miss opportunities to engage. So I hope that we will, I'm not sure the outcome would have been any different. In other words, if we were to decide tonight, oh, let's just wait six months, and you guys say, well, okay, fine. So then we come back, you know, in November. My guess is from an engineering standpoint, your answer is still going to be the same, right? We could probably have more conversations. But if we waited on this and didn't move forward with allowing you to work on the design phase, my guess is your engineering answer, your technical answer is not going to be any different six months from now, regardless of how much community engagement you had. People might feel a little better about it, but we'd probably be at pretty much the same place. Or if you had started some more robust community engagement and reached out to more people six months earlier than maybe people felt that you did. So I think we are where we are. Again, not a criticism of either the people delivering the message or the people receiving the message. Obviously, if people didn't hear, the burden is on the communicator, not the recipient. If someone genuinely didn't hear, then they didn't hear, and shame on us, the collective of us, for not reaching out to somebody. So I guess, I hope there's a lesson learned here for future projects and for this project. And I know we have a lot of work ahead of us over the next couple, two, three years on design, and we're going to have a lot of opportunity for community engagement, and we're going to get better and better at it. So I do want to thank the community members who came out and shared their views. I think if your hope was, if your hope was, gosh, you know, don't touch reach six, I think that's not going to happen, because we do have some greater good to achieve here. But if your hope was to signal to the city staff that engagement could be better, I think you did a really good job of that tonight. And I think other community members downstream, no pun intended, will thank you for those improvements that you suggested. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Bob. Rachel?
Thanks. And I also thank the community members who are out here, and I, you know, I'm sure that you can probably read the tea leaves a little bit, that my reading is that there's going to be a majority of council that votes yes tonight. And I want to just invite you, as someone who did long-term engagement on a topic exactly like this, that it's, it does bring your neighborhood together, and it is something that if you engage on, as Nicole said, you can shape the outcomes in ways that are meaningful. So I also want to say with that in mind that it will be this council that's making the decision tonight, and I hope that any anger will come at us and not staff, because they will just be doing what we're asking them to do. And sometimes, community members get very mad at the decision and take it out on the staffers who are working on the project, so that doesn't move any of us forward. And I would just really invite people to direct anger our way. I'm a little bit concerned about Mayor Brockett's motion request to limit to floral drive, because this is a life safety project. And if floral drive means that we can, you know, we have to lose, I don't know, 25 years of flood protection for people who might die in a 100-year flood, I'm not for that. So I would be okay with a motion that says, you know, preferentially, you know, something like, you know, floral drive or something like it that minimizes impacts to neighbors. I'm for, but the one thing I disagree with a little bit that was said tonight by my colleagues is someone said our number one job is engagement. And I will say again, I think we, it sounds like we bricked on this, but I think our number one job is public safety, and this is about safety and protecting people from dying in the next flood, which is coming. So I will not be supporting delay, and that probably surprises no one. I understand feelings that are not happy right now. But with that, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve, let's see, approve the Upper Goose and Two Mile Canyon Creek UGT flood mitigation plan with a preference if it is equally as good of flood protection for floral, is it floral drive option?
Thanks for that, Rachel. And that was exactly what I wanted to do, not to require it. So appreciate your comments on that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. I think the motioner and the seconder have already spoken to the question. Does anyone else have additional comments before we go to a vote? Seeing none. Is a show of hands for this one? Roll call? Let's do it.
Thank you. All right. We will start this roll call for item 5A with Councilmember Weiner.
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Benjamin?
Yes.
Mayor Brockett?
Yes.
Councilmember Folkerts?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Spear?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Wallin?
Early on the basis of our public engagement failures, no.
All right. Item 5A, the Upper Goose, Two Mile Canyon Creek Flood Mitigation Plan is hereby approved with a vote of eight to one.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for your engagement on the topic, and do rest assured that city staff will be doing significant outreach and engagement during the next phases. All right. Before we move on to our next item, I'd like to do a time check with council. It's getting late. We have one more item in front of us, but perhaps we can do at least some sections of it. Bob?
Yeah, thanks for that, Aaron. I was going to suggest the same thing. We do have a, I think we have one item left, and it is a public hearing, so I'd hate, I'm loath to postpone the public hearing, because we've got staff here, and we've got at least one person signed up to speak, and maybe the applicant's here as well. So can I make a suggestion to my colleagues that we go ahead and hear, hopefully Marcia, a brief staff presentation, open the public hearing, hear the testimony that might be offered, but then adjourn for the night? I think, Aaron, if I understand correctly, we have actually 30 days in which to make a decision after a public hearing. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I believe that the latest regularly scheduled council meeting would be June 15.
Okay. So I guess my suggestion to my colleagues would be, let's do the public hearing, and then let's adjourn for the night because it's kind of late. And then we'll leave to CAC to schedule the actual deliberation of vote, if that's okay.
That sounds good to me. I think when we get there, we'll need a formal motion, but as a direction, I think that sounds good. There are people feel like that's pretty good for it. I'm generally seeing nodding heads. All right, well, let's do the, what I'm sure will be a fascinating presentation. We can allow, I believe the applicant is here. We can hear some words from them, do the public hearing, and then maybe have a motion to continue.
I will need to read it into the record first.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Alicia. Please do.
Thank you. All right, our next item, 5B, under public hearings, is the consideration of a motion to approve a landmark alteration certificate to rehabilitate and add on to Building L, the former nurse's dormitory at the Academy of Mapleton Hill at 2543 Fourth Street. This is previously addressed 311 Mapleton Avenue, a pending individual landmark per Sections 9-11-18 of the Boulder Revised Code. It's referenced under HIS 2023-00018.
Good evening, council. My name's Marcy Gerwing, Principal Planner in Planning and Development Services, and I will make this quick. Tonight's hearing is a quasi-judicial hearing, and so I'll go through the process. It'll begin with council members noting any ex parte contacts, followed by a staff presentation. Then the applicant has a chance to present, and then the public hearing is open for public comment. Council may ask questions after each one of those. After the final person from the public has spoken, the applicant has a chance to respond to anything that was said. The public hearing is then closed, and council discusses. A motion requires an affirmative vote of at least five members to pass, and a record of the hearing is available in central records. So with that, I would pass it back over to you, Mayor, for ex parte contacts.
Has anyone had any ex parte communications on this topic? I'm not seeing any. Well, I'll elbow Rachel and Lauren when they come back in to make sure that they have negative response as well.
All right. Okay, this is a landmark alteration certificate, and your criteria for review is found in 91118 of the Boulder Revised Code.
Hold on. Lauren and Rachel, have you had any ex parte communications?
No.
All right, that's nine of us then. Okay, go ahead.
And the criteria is that the proposed work preserves, enhances, or restores, and does not damage the exterior architectural features of the property, that it does not adversely affect the historic or architectural value, and that the architecture arrangement and color is compatible with the character, and that economic feasibility, incorporation of energy-efficient design, and enhanced access for the disabled is considered in your decision. The options in front of you tonight are to approve the application, deny the application, provide the opportunity to withdraw the application, or, as just discussed, continue the item. This application began back in June of 2019, when the designation applications were submitted. Those have been on hold, but we anticipate bringing those forward to you all in 2023. This LAC application was submitted in February of, earlier this year, and the committee referred it to the Landmarks Board for Review. On April 12, the board conditionally approved the application in a unanimous vote, and on May 4, council voted to call up the application, which brings us here this evening. The subject property is located on the northwest corner of Fourth and Mapleton, adjacent to the Mapleton Hill Historic District. The property has a very fascinating history, which I will just summarize this evening in a few sentences, which is that it was the home of two institutions that really shaped Boulder, the first being the Boulder, Colorado Sanitarium, which has ties to the sanitarium that J. H. Kellogg ran in Battle Creek, Michigan. This sanitarium ran through the 1950s. At its heyday, it had its own food production, a nurse's school, and about 30 buildings total. Today, there are five structures that remain from the sanitarium's history, and each of these structures is proposed for landmark designation and are pending. Tonight's discussion, though, is focused on the nurse's dormitory, which was constructed in 1931 and designed by the Redding &amp; Sons Architectural Firm, who also designed the Boulder Auto and the Uni Hill Elementary School. So the proposed work has four main components, beginning with the restoration of the building, including windows, cornice, masonry, removal of an elevator tower that was added on to the east facade, and removing the exterior exit stairs on the north and south elevations. Second is the modification of door and window openings on each of the elevations, including new window openings, dropping the sill level of windows on the east and north facades, and replacement of all exterior doors. Third is the construction of additions, including an elevator and stair tower, an enclosed walkway on the west or rear elevation, balconies and decks on the south and north elevations. And finally, landscaping, including the construction of retaining walls and patios enclosed by glass walls. So going to the site plan, you can see changes to the footprint include removing the stair tower that was added on to the front of the building and construction of a new stair and elevator tower on the west side, and then balconies and patios on the north and south ends of the building. Going to the east elevation, the stair tower to be removed is there in the center, and those openings will be restored. There were a few window openings proposed on this elevation, as well as the addition that you can see on the left side of the image. It's on the second story. It's a kind of a greenhouse addition. Moving around to the south side, you can see that greenhouse addition on the top of the second-story portion, as well as the balconies and the retaining wall proposed at the rear of the building. Moving around to the west or the back of the building, this is where the around to the west or the back of the building, this is where the new stair and elevator tower would be, as well as modification to window and door openings. And then finally, going to the north elevation, which is the side that the building is approached from, also includes removal of the nonhistoric stair and construction of the balcony, as well as window and door modifications. Moving on to the staff analysis, looking at the criteria for review, as well as the design guidelines, we found that the restoration is aligned, aligns and is encouraged by the general design guidelines and will restore the building to its original appearance as documented by historic photographs, and we are fortunate enough to have the original plans. One of the conditions of approval that the Landmarks Board made in their motion was to catalog the condition of these different elements. For the window and door openings, this is primarily where the board's discussion was and staff's recommendation of the appropriateness of window and door modifications based on the prominence of each elevation. So the addition of new openings on the west or the rear are appropriate. New window openings and modifications of existing openings on the east and north are not appropriate. So the conditions of approval are to revise the proposal to eliminate the proposed new window openings on the east elevation and the uppermost opening of the north elevation, because those are the most visually prominent. And then to revise the design to maintain the historic window openings on the north and east elevations. Moving to the additions, generally, staff and the Landmarks Board found the proposed additions to be consistent with the design guidelines. They do not directly obscure the character-defining features of the building. They are clearly of their own time. And however, the mass and scale of the contemporary style detracts from the overall character. And so the conditions were to modify the design language to lighten it up a little bit, still keep them inset from the masonry walls, and then redesign the balconies to minimize their visual impact, including analysis from public rights away, including public trails. And then finally, there were a few detailed conditions, including revising the location of the retaining wall to be outside of the conservation area shown in the recorded development agreement. There's a very small portion of the retaining wall that intersects with the conservation piece. And while that's not directly a historic preservation piece, we wanted to ensure a smooth process as this then goes into development review. And then there are final details about the retaining wall drainage, trees, et cetera. And so with that, staff and the Landmarks Board recommend that city council approve the application with conditions. The main question in front of you all for the discussion is, does the project meet the standards for issuance of a LAC? If yes, approve the application. It would then go to the committee level to work out the final details. If no, deny the application. And I have the criteria for review, if you'd like to reference those or the conditions. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks so much for that, Marcy. That was very edifying. And so questions for Marcy, keeping in mind that we can, if we're continuing, we can ask follow-up questions when we come back to it. Any questions tonight? Lauren?
So with the recommendation around revisions, so that the new additions are more in line with the architectural character, who, would that come back to us for final approval, or does that just go to the Landmarks Board?
It would go to the Landmarks Design Review Committee, who meet weekly and would work through the conditions. I know the applicant has some images to show of kind of what they're thinking in terms of revisions.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions for staff, then I would invite the applicant to come up and say a few words.
And I do have a few slides, too, so I can speak from here.
Yes, if you could just introduce yourself and speak from the podium there.
Yes, good evening. I'm Norrie Winter, and I am a consultant in historic preservation with more than 40 years of experience and a long-term Boulder resident. I helped write the design guidelines for the Chamberlain Historic District here, but I've also written guidelines for historic preservation in more than 100 communities across the country, including Denver, Salt Lake, San Jose, San Antonio, Seattle, Tacoma, a variety of communities. And I mention that because it's from that national perspective that I want you to think about what preservation means and how it relates to this building. With me, oh, I'm sorry, next slide, please. I'm not sure who I'm talking. Thank you. The development team is headed by Michael Bosma and Gary Berg, and Gary is here this evening to help answer any questions you may have. Mike Mulhern of the Mulhern Group is the architect. And I mentioned that our experience because of the, not only has it been national, but also locally here. You see images of the other academy on University Hill, and we worked with Gary Berg on that some years ago with the city. And of course, that now is a wonderful asset to the community that we're all very pleased with. We are asking that you approve the project as submitted, and that is almost as the Landmarks Board approved, but we would ask that you reconsider a couple of the items that they denied. And I will go into that in a little bit more detail here. Next slide, please. I want to, from that national perspective, sorry, yeah, from the national perspective, I want to point out that sometimes we lose sight of what preservation really means, and we tighten up too much and get too restrictive. It really means hitting on three of these very important points. One, keeping a building at active use. Two, making alterations that are compatible in order to keep it functional. And three, preserving those key features that do define its historic significance. But that does not exclude appropriate alterations. Next slide, please. I do want to reiterate that the restoration aspects that staff mentioned are extensive and expensive. It's going, this building is going to require a lot of work, and the window restoration itself is going to be enormous. Removing the incompatible elevator shaft and restoring the central stair element will also be very, very important. While the windows need restoration, it also gives us an opportunity to be certain that they are easily operable by senior citizens, since this is an important new adaptive use with a new user group for which this building was not designed. Next, please. Oh, what? Oh, maybe I'm out of sequence here. And part of that, oh, yeah, you're keeping me on my toes. And so adding windows to the north elevation, which we really believe is a tertiary or a back-of-house wall to this building, should be reconsidered. You see the quality of the wall on the left-hand side here, and the rendering shows the additional windows. These will enhance the livability of these spaces enormously, and they're very important for that reason. Now, part of the question here is the rating of this facade. The design guidelines have criteria for determining whether a facade is primary, secondary, or tertiary, and therefore indicates how rigorous the city should be at applying its guidelines. The criteria are the degree of visibility from a public way and the extent of character-defining features that are important to that elevation. You can see this is a very modest wall, basically built as back-of-house, and I'll show you a little bit more about that. Next slide, please. And historically, the north wall, which is pointed out here by the arrow, was looking into basically undeveloped land. It was not visible from a street or a major public way. At this point, even the trail, that was an internal trail to the facility. Next slide, please. Looking at the original architects' plans, we'll see that this area was very functional. It was back-of-house. If you can go to the next slide, we're zooming in on that. And you can see that the spaces here were a trunk room, a kitchenette, and a laundry, and a back door leading out to that undeveloped area. Now, this is important in terms of considering how significant is that facade and how susceptible is it to alterations. If we then go to the next slide, I want to direct your attention now to the east wall, coming around the corner from that north wall. There is a related issue. Because those spaces were a kitchen and laundry area, the windows were higher. They were at four foot two elevation, the sills. They weren't needed to be operable by senior residents. The rest of this elevation, the windows sit on a sill, a ledger of projecting brick line, whereas those windows at the right-hand most portion of the building are much higher. Now, that is going to impact the quality of life for residents in that area in terms of being able to operate them, or even be able to sit and look outside. So that's, if you go to the next slide, you will see the existing window sill height is four feet two inches, and a variety of standards and guidelines for accessibility and for senior living recommend sill heights much lower than that. The recommendation would lower those windows to match those on the rest of the facade, which is in keeping with the character of the building, and yet enhancing the functionality of that part of the building. Next slide, please. The staff did reference that the architects were already working on refining some of the aspects that we got direction from the Landmarks Board. The upper right was the one that submitted to the Landmarks Board. The lower left is one still needs work, but you can see lightening up the impacts and making the balconies more transparent so that you could see through to the rest of the, of the building. So that is the steps that the, that the team will be going through in terms of refining the designs for the balconies, still helping to distinguish them as new, not fake historic ornamentation on them, a contemporary design, but in keeping with the character of the building. At the next slide, you'll see some of the precedents that we're studying. This is an example of a similar kind of transparent balcony design on an historic building, where you can see old and new, but new doesn't compete with the old, and you can see the historic character of the building. And that's what we're after. In the next slide, we're pursuing that same idea with the deck that is proposed on the south side, which is rated as a, as a secondary elevation. The original architects' drawings show that this was always intended to be a deck. Next slide, please. And so the objectives here are to continue to refine the structure, to make it thinner and lighter and even more transparent, so that it sits lightly on the, on the roof of that two-story wing. The next slide shows some examples of the kinds of precedents that we're looking at, of how to balance transparency and functionality, and the lightness of the structure with the, with the degree of, of glass that's needed there. We're looking forward to great discussions, working with the Design Review Committee in terms of coming up with refinements to those, to those concepts. Next slide, please. So I've highlighted a couple of the points that we would really ask that you reconsider in the spirit of the adaptive use of this building in particular, of the special population that it needs to serve, and recognizing that this building's been vacant now for a long time, and we want to get it back into service as quickly as possible. I believe this project does hit on all three of those aspects of historic preservation. It will keep a building in active use. It will have, it will accommodate compatible alterations, and it will preserve the key features and characteristics of the structure. Then finally, as staff mentioned it, I wanted to, if you go to the next slide, please, the last slide. I did want to mention, we all love the Boulderato, and we would certainly consider that it retains its historic significance, even though it has undergone several alterations throughout its history. You'll notice here that a brick entry on the south side was removed, that, of course, we've all dined in the porch that was added in front on the first floor, and we've all enjoyed the second-floor balcony that was subsequently enclosed with glass. These are all alterations in keeping with the spirit of this building, and we're asking to do something similar with the nurses' quarters. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Norrie. Appreciate that. And so just a quick thought for you, if you might send us an email, it sounds like we're probably going to continue the hearing, but with maybe a summary of those comments that probably help us as we come to a final decision here at a future meeting. Thanks for that. Any questions for Mr. Winter tonight?
Just a quick question, Norrie. This, that was a very helpful presentation, and I look forward to having a copy in front of us as well. This is a little bit off the point on the LAC, but I was just kind of curious. How many housing units does the developer hope to put in there?
Gary?
Great, that's it.
The answer was six, for the mic's purpose of getting it on the microphone. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, let's go to the public hearing then. We have one person signed up. So Lynn Segal, you get three minutes to speak to us.
No. Putting seniors in the line of fire on the wildfire urban, wildlife urban interface is unwise. The whole of the Mapleton project should not have been built, to start with. Michael Bosma bulldozed one of the landmark cottages. He'll say it wasn't him. It was someone that, some rogue person that broke in and, and drove a bulldozer. Like, how many people can drive a bulldozer if they're not working on the property? You know, I find his story very unsustainable or unbelievable. There was a fire also on the property, on a trailer of his. That's putting me at risk. I live about four blocks from this place. Let's see. I say less is more, particularly on the wooie, the wildlife urban interface. Do not give this project any subsidies. If they, if they have certain rights, there's nothing I can do to stop them. But I certainly would not approve an LAC. Also, this is super high-end housing, forty-some thousand dollars a month for one of their places. You can live in there. Plus, something like, let's see, about five million dollars you put down, and then you get 85% of it back when you die. This is a big money-making enterprise in this area, in, in my immediate neighborhood, and I in no way support it. It's going to drive up my, already my property taxes went up $445,000 from $900,000 to 1.35 in my place here. I don't consider my home my cash cow. I consider my home a place where I live, and my homeowners, well, my taxes, I mean, my property taxes just went up from $6,000 to $9,000. This 311 Mapleton project is going to harm me directly, and I don't in any way approve of anything to do with it. Yeah, and why would anyone put seniors in the line of fire? It threatens me. There's one way out, and I'm not going to be able to get out of my own neighborhood when the fire comes. And the other day, I tried to get homeowner's insurance, because my homeowner's insurance went up from 1,500 a year, 1,600 a year, to 3,500. So I got another policy, and in the process, I found that I can't get, they won't write me a policy because I'm in the fire zone. And that's.
All right, Lynn, your time is up, but thank you for your testimony. All right, that's, I will now close the public hearing. And if we wanted to continue, now would be a good time. Bob?
Yeah, I move that we continue this public hearing to a date set by CAC, but in no event later than June 15.
And actually, Erin, can I just ask a question? Do we need to have to pick a date certain tonight, or is that, with that final date being within the 30 days, good enough?
I believe, as Bob suggested, CAC would set it as June 15 being the latest possible meeting.
Perfect, thanks, Bob. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, show of hands. Motion is second. Uh, all in favor? Show of hands. Okay, right, that's unanimous. So the, uh, hearing is continued, and we'll send it to CAC to schedule it for a future business meeting no later than June fifteenth. Thanks to the applicant for your time tonight, and we'll come back to you before too long. All right, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Any final thoughts before we close up for the night? Yes, Nicole?
I just wanted to thank Brad and Kurt for staying, just in case you were needed. Appreciate it. We'll see you next time we discuss.
Yep, appreciate you all staying late, for sure. Okay, seeing nothing else, all gavels closed at ten twenty-one PM. Thanks, everybody.